Okay, like to call me in order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Play ball.
And tonight, our invocation will be given by Pastor Doug Parlin. Welcome back Pastor.
Thank you. I want to read our admonition as citizens about our responsibility to government from Romans 13, 1 through 10. Let every soul be subject to the governing authorities, for there is no authority except from God, and the authorities that exist are appointed by God. Therefore whoever resists the authority resists the ordinance of God, and those who resist will bring judgment on themselves. For rulers are not a terror to good works but to evil. Do you want to be unafraid of the authority? Do what is good, and you will have praise from the same. For he is God's servant to you for good, but if you do evil be afraid, for he does not bear the sword in vain. For he is God's servant and avenger to execute wrath on him who practices evil. Therefore you must be subject not only because of wrath but also for conscience sake. For because of this you also pay taxes, for they are God's servants attending continually to this very thing. Render therefore to all their due, taxes to whom taxes are due, customs to whom customs, fear to whom fear, honor to whom honor. O no one anything except to love one another, for he who loves another has fulfilled the law. For the commandment is, you shall not commit adultery, you shall not murder, you shall not steal, you shall not bear false witness, you shall not covet, and if there are any other commandments, all summed up in this saying, namely, you shall love your neighbor as yourself. Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we come to you in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, and we thank you for our city government here in Holly Springs. Lord, we thank you for the leadership of Mayor Sears and all the staff and the council people that work with him. And Lord, as we come to this point in our time in history, when this time of year with so many volatile storms, we, our heart goes out to all the suffering and the turmoil and facing the disaster and the relief efforts in Texas. We pray you to minister to the people, to the police and the fire department, the rescue, everyone that's involved in helping that tremendous tragedy that took place. And Lord, we're aware that another major storm is heading this way. We don't know for sure, but many people are already being affected and some in South Florida will be evacuated tomorrow. We pray for safety, we pray for guidance, we thank you for our staff here in our city and the police and the fire department and everyone that works together. And Lord, when there's times like this, we definitely need to show genuine love and look out for our fellow man and do our best to do what's right. Lord, we ask thy blessing on this meeting. We thank you for those that will be recognized and each one that also that has a part in this part of the government tonight. We pray that everything might be done decently and order, and Lord, that you might continue to bless and prosper this community as they seek to do what's best for each of us. And may we as citizens do our part to make it a better place. We pray and ask this in Jesus' name and give thanks. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Doug. Item number four is adjustment approval of September 5, 2017 meeting agenda, and it's black.
Do we have any, do we have any adjustments to it?
Hang on, we do.
You not see it on your screen?
Nope.
Completely black.
We got new screens, they don't work. Yay!
Everything's black.
But you look nice.
Look on the box. Go hit the power button on the right.
On the bottom?
Oh, power button? Oh, that could do it.
There we go. It's us.
Oh, yeah.
Hey.
It's amazing.
It's technology.
Technology. We're all techies, right?
Thanks, Pete.
It wasn't the power button.
It was the power button.
No.
Was it?
It wasn't.
Who knows what it was?
It was the knee button. It's the button that everybody's knee hits.
We'll take that.
All right, now you can go.
All right. Motion to adopt the September 5, 2017 meeting agenda with the following changes. Move item 11C, which is spectrum agreement, and 11D, which is the Ting agreement for new business, to the consent agenda for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made in second or favor.
Aye.
opposed, motion passed unanimously, thank you. Item number five is a public comment period, please have your comments within three minutes if you would, and I'll go right down the line. First one up is Christine Kelly. Do you want to do yours now, or I guess you do.
Sure.
Okay. Okay.
Took me a minute, sorry.
Hi, Christine Kelly, 201 Grigsby Avenue. I wanted to just make a point on the new business item, number 11A. I was able to attend the planning board meeting that was two Tuesdays ago, and the, on the table is for you guys to discuss looking at altering the two-story plan to one-story for the Main Street, no, Main Street Square. I've been looking at so many Main Streets. It's the gateway to our downtown, and I think that this is an opportunity for us to really think about what we can do downtown and build something that is awesome when people come in. So my, my request is for you to consider what that would do to change something that's already been approved from two-story to one-story, and it might minimize what we, what we show for folks that are coming into our town. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Steven Reed, I think the same subject perhaps? If not, it doesn't matter. Name and address, please.
Steven Reed, 211 Colson Drive. I'm a physical therapist with Pivot Physical Therapy. I'm also a regional president for all our business that falls under North Carolina. Pivot provides outpatient physical therapy across many communities in North Carolina, from the beaches to the mountains, providing 38 locations currently in North Carolina. Pivot's been excited to, about the opportunity to expand and serve the community Holly Springs. With the growing community that Holly Springs is, with that comes the need for additional medical services, including physical therapy, to meet those needs of the community. Pivot provides itself on providing the best patient and referring provider experience, and this includes our ability to provide convenient locations close to where people live and work. Pivot already provides services to people in the Holly Springs community, outside of Holly Springs, so people commuting outside of Holly Springs to places like Apex, Fuquay, Verena, Cary. With this addition to this market, Main Street Square location, this would be able to provide a more convenient location for physical therapy services, as well as other medical services. Pivot already has a great relationship with existing medical providers that trust Pivot with their patients' care. This would include Avance Care, which is a primary care physician group that we have a past relationship with, who would be providing medical services in this same building, and this would help provide great continuity of care for our patients. We have worked hand in hand with the developer over the past, and the town over the past nine months on this project, and this was not a rushed decision on its design. Pivot also, we've also worked with this same developer over the past eight years, and I can tell you from my experience and our patients' experience, all the buildings that we've gone into with this developer has been Class A medical space. It's not an eyesore to the town and community. So, in conclusion, a no vote would significantly blow, have a significant blow to our ability to bring this needed service to this community, and it would be hard for us to wait some undetermined time for this building to go up. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. I may not get this last name correct, so forgive me. Angie Stahely? Am I close? I never get this right. Is it close enough?
Stahely.
Stahely. You misspelled your last name.
I know, I gotta work on that.
I know, we talked about that before. Angie, talk about Needham House.
Yes, sir. Angie Stahely, 212 Merz Bluff Lane. So I have in my hand a picture of a dilapidated house. A house that, for all intents and purposes, should have been torn down a long time ago. It looks like it could be a health hazard. It looks actually like it's part of the greenery, right? Is there even a house in there? Yes, there is. It looks like a piece of junk. But what if I were to tell you that this house was actually built between 1789 and 1801? But more importantly than when it was built, what if I were to tell you what happened here? In the spring of 1865, Mary Ann Holland was a single mom at the time because her husband was missing, and she had six little children that she was taking care of, as many as you know who have seen finding patients. Well, she had heard that Union troops were on their way through Avent Ferry, waiting for the Confederacy to surrender, and they approached her house and they knocked on the door, and they had an injured soldier with them. Now, Mary Ann could have done several things. She could have been embittered, she could have not allowed them inside, she could have refused to help them and hung out with her children upstairs, but instead, she turned the main floor of this house into a field hospital, and she took in Union soldiers. And in the top of the house, that is where she and her kids lived. She nursed these soldiers back to health, even though they were, for all intents and purposes, her enemies. She did everything that she could for them, so much so that after the Civil War was over, she still nursed some soldiers back to health and then sent them on a train in Raleigh a couple months afterwards. So when I tell you that, does it increase the value of this piece of junk? Of course it does. It's suddenly important. It suddenly means something. That is because when we know the history, it increases its worth. When you know the story behind someone or something, it connects you to it, and it matters. I just wanted to bring this forward as the Needham Norris House. This is something that actually symbolizes, if I'm so bold as to say, the spirit of Holly Springs. In a time and society right now where we're very much focused on symbols, on monuments, on landmarks, and there's been a huge division in our society because of this, we have something very unique and different. We have a landmark that actually shows people bridging differences and trying to find commonality and forgiveness. Mary Ann Holland, when she took those soldiers in, she showed the spirit of Holly Springs, and that is the spirit of humanity, the spirit of brotherhood, the spirit of sisterhood. And of course, as many as you know, this is in danger of being torn down, and I know that everybody wants to save it. That is not, it's not as if nobody wants to save it, but I realize there are a lot of difficult decisions associated with saving a property like this. Financially, time-wise, a lot of work involved, but I just want to appeal to you and ask of you, encourage you, to please consider the symbol that it is to our town. When you understand your history, you understand your identity. In a town that understands its identity, attracts people, and it makes people want to respect where they live, it makes them want to contribute their own legacies to the town. So I encourage us to save this as a place where people can actually take part in it. And one more thing I do have to say about that is that when Mary Ann was left at the end of the war with this giant house, or this giant piece of property and small house, she asked herself the same question, how are we going to save this house? She didn't have anyone to help her till the land. Well, that's when she symbolized the spirit of Holly Springs once again, and the entire town came together. The masons, the local masons came and helped work the land, the community members contributed and helped to save the Holland House. So I encourage us to do the same. We have people willing to give their time and their talents and their energies to helping to save this important, important landmark to our history, and I just encourage you as members of the council and local government, you have an opportunity to leave your legacy on this town, and you have done so much work that we are truly grateful for. Thank you for your service to this town, and I hope that, that you would consider leaving a legacy that will preserve our past, because we don't get a second chance. Once it's gone, it's gone, and we have very few things left to teach our children about, and this is something that we can be proud of to share with others. Thank you so much.
Thank Angie.
Thank you.
Next, next, speaking on the same subject, and again, the last name maybe, Veronica Del Giardo? Hello? Are you there? She spoke what you were going to speak? All right, thank you. Lynn Boyle on 11A, new, new business.
My name is Levi Boyd, 817 Hillsborough Street, Raleigh, North Carolina. I'm the CFO of Avance Care. We are a local family medicine practice. We've got nine locations across the triangle, and we are a hopeful tenant. I'm speaking on behalf of Avance Care today, as well as Dr. Seo Adina, who was with patients a few minutes ago, was trying to get over here. We've been working on expanding in Holly Springs. We have a current practice here now for a couple of years now. In fact, this, on this Main Street Square site, we've been working with the prior owner as well as, and working on development with him for a couple of years, nothing happened. We worked with some local brokers who introduced us to the current developers about a year ago, and they said, we can get this off the ground, we can have you in in 2018. So we said, give us a lease, we'll sign it. We've got a lease ready to sign with them, and we're just waiting on, on the building to be approved, and very hopeful that it will be. Our new space will be much bigger than our current space. It'll accommodate about four PCPs, so two doctors, two probably nurse practitioners or PAs, and then we also have onsite behavioral therapists, as well as a registered dietitian like all of our locations have. They're all open seven days a week, evening and weekend hours, so very convenient for patients. We're happy that the developer has brought in Pivot Physical Therapy, who we work very closely with at multiple of our locations, so it allows for more integrated care for our patients and very convenient to have right next door. We don't feel the process has been rushed. Like I said, we've worked on it a couple of years now, and so hoping that, that something can happen, because we are very excited to expand and, and have, have been looking at other opportunities, but hopeful that this one will happen sooner than later. We've gone through another renditions with Trey and his team to have the space be a beautiful Class A office building, that's the only thing we'll go into, and we're very hopeful that'll be one of the nicest buildings in that complex. We hope to be a tenant for a long time, and we're, we're just very hopeful that we can add additional healthcare service and additional providers to Holly Springs and its citizens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Levi.
Levi. Don't worry, don't worry, his hand rises.
Yeah, that's all right. Last but not least, Joe Fanjoy. Talking about Grigsby. His favorite subject.
Man, we guessed.
I guessed it last time, too.
And it's been nine months.
I know, it goes fast, doesn't it?
It does, really.
Name and address, please, Joe.
All right. Hello, Mayor, council, staff. Hope you all had a great weekend. My name is Joe Fanjoy. I live at 109 Fairground Road, right here in Holly Springs. Fairground is down Grigsby, as you all know, and just wanted to come here and reemphasize the need to improve Grigsby, and also just request an update from you all if you have any additional information beyond what we talked about in January. So, as far as making improvements to Grigsby, you know, I feel like this is a really important road for the town, as well as the residents that, that live down there. I mean, not only does it connect Womble, the Greenway, to connection to Bass Lake, Sug Farm, which goes to Bass Lake, so it's really kind of an integral part for town facilities, but then also, we have, I guess, five neighborhoods now, and then one coming on, I guess it's Park Avenue, if that's what they still call it, so that will be on the right past Fairhill. So, you know, just additional residents that are going to use that every day, so, you know, I feel like it's a pretty important road. I've been there for 17 years, and it's got the same pavement that it had when we moved in in 99, so I just feel like it's, it's due for some improvements, and, you know, as I pointed out last time, you know, when the first neighborhoods came in on Grigsby, it might have been a time when the town was giving some flexibility for developers to put in curb and gutter. So right now, you know, 15, 10 or 15 years later, we have gaps in curb and gutter where ordinarily there would have been. So, you know, again, just reemphasizing the need to, to improve Grigsby for the town and the residents there, and just wanted to request a quick update.
Okay. We got it, Joe. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this point in time, a closed public hearing, and we've got to make a move here.
Yeah, I'm not sure where they went.
We're moving.
Are they, are they people from Holly? Um. Megan, Megan? I don't need. We're here, but.
We lost our audience.
No.
All right, this, this will be agenda 6A, special recognition, childhood cancer awareness month. Councilwoman Sheri Lady will go first.
Okay, I'm just looking, they were here a few minutes ago, Megan and Katie.
They're not.
Oh.
They're not out there.
I wonder if they thought they were in the wrong place.
They were. They were.
Chief, would you check for us? Thanks, Charlie.
All right, well, while we are looking for our special guests, you know, this is one of those things in this, in this day and time that we, it warms my heart to have teenagers and caring, some of our caring students here from Holly Springs, to reach out to us for, to help other people. We see a lot of that every day, but we kind of forget it. They come up, they present, and we kind of forget about it. So it really warms my heart to see that this, that we still have people that want to do something, and what this group wants to do, maybe, is something that will last, and we'll be able to see it after. Okay, I'm going to start, and I'll let them fill you in. So we have some students. We have Megan Forrestal, Katie Kitching, and Haley West, who are members of HOSA at Holly Springs High School. HOSA is the Health Occupational Students of America, and mostly for students, students who want to go into the health profession. And one thing that is near and dear to them is childhood cancer awareness. And what they proposed to do was, it was to plant flowers.
And a tree.
And a tree, or if we have an existing tree, they could plant flowers around. Yeah, and to continue, and that will, as a reminder to people about this fight. So, we, I don't know, they have been meeting with town staff about choosing that tree. They are going to be at the farmer's market to talk about the child, you know, to bring more awareness to childhood cancers and to let people know what we can do to help. So I believe the mayor has proclamation.
Well, we have a couple things. First of all, even though they're not here, we have a proclamation for them. If they come in late, we'll give it to them anyway. Proclamation being childhood cancer awareness month, as Sheri just said. It's awareness month throughout our community, and I always, I urge all citizens to join me, and the Holly Springs High School, HOSA students, Megan, Katie, and Haley, as you said, this month in celebrating the courage, and we've all seen this, and resilience of children who are battling cancer by placing wind chimes. Wind chimes, oh yes, wind chimes. I got them, I got them, I got them. Got them. When we find them, wherever they are, or that special tree they're talking about, these go in the tree. All three of the kids who aren't here. We'll make sure these kids get this, and it'll be a special time for them. So again, I urge everybody to join us with wind chimes and gold ribbons on the evergreen tree that they're talking about in the northeast yard of Holly Springs Cultural Center. So that's my story, and I'm sticking with it, and we'll find them, and we'll give them the proclamation, and we'll give them the wind chimes wherever they are, okay? Thank you, Sheri.
Thank you.
I think they're here. They were here. New haircut. Yeah. I like it. Agenda 6B, special recognition, the Holly Springs School of Dance, some of you may have heard of this, and it's Councilman Dixon and myself, and I'm going to let him lead off, please.
Thank you, Mayor Sears. I felt it appropriate that we, we honor the Holly Springs School of Dance. It's been essentially, I would say in many respects, a pioneer of, of business here in Holly Springs, in the, the new Holly Springs. They, I can still remember going to a Chamber breakfast, and in those days, a Chamber breakfast took place at the gas station, and everybody used to kick in a dollar, two or three to pay for the, the cookies or the donuts or the, or the coffee. I guess you would remember, remember that bill. So, and that's when I met Marilyn Chapel for the first time, and I can still remember her saying, introducing herself, I'm Marilyn Chapel, and I'm going to be opening up a dance school in Holly Springs. Well, this was, there was not a whole lot compared to today going on in Holly Springs, and I was like, okay, that's, that's, that's good, good luck. But gosh, what a visionary these folks were. Little, I mean, I mean, right now, you have kids that start in that school who get dropped off by, well, they don't get dropped off by their parents. I can, I'm speaking for myself. I'd bring my daughter there, and my wife and I would have to stay there. We'd have to stay with the whole class. As they get a little older, you're able to drop off and maybe go to Food Lion, pick something up, get back before it's over with. And there was that, maybe that 20 minutes or 30 minutes right in the middle, when they would get occupied with the dance class and not know you were gone. Then comes the time when you just drop them off, and they're good to go. And then, like you have now, like I have now, your daughters drive themselves there, and you never have to, have to stop by.
Scary, right? Scary.
So, so again, there, they are true pioneers here in terms of business, and in growing the business. I, I, left click. Okay. This was a photo of, I guess, when you extended into 148. So, and again, there's one of, one of the first businesses that actually has, has expanded. They started with, I don't remember what, what unit it was, but then expanded into 148, and now they pretty much have, maybe with the exception of one unit, that whole building there over in the Oak Hall shopping area, so. All right, hand it back to you.
I didn't have any of this. Oh, well, I got this. I'm going to ask both of you to come forward, please. I can't get over your hair, it's so nice. I like it. What happened?
Only career they broke.
I got you. First of all, congratulations, congratulations. Secondly, this is the mayor's certificate of commendation presented to Marilyn and Chris Chapel, in case you didn't know their name. High, High Springs School of Dance, 20 years ago. I was 10, I don't remember. But anyway, 20 years ago, a lot of people didn't see the potential of Holly Springs, probably including me, but yeah, I think I did. So, we are congratulating you on your 20th anniversary since cutting the ribbon cutting at Holly Springs, and I think I was there, I'm not sure. Do you remember? Say yes if you don't.
Yes. No, I don't think you were, but let's pretend.
All right. But she, she is teaching them not only the art of dance, but also instilled in them a spirit of community, responsibility, respect, appreciation for the arts and services. And every time you've been asked to participate, this is so true, every time we've asked them to participate in some town function, I don't care what it is, Sug Farm, Christmas Parade, blah, 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 always. But what you don't know is, by the power invested in me, which is about that much, I gave her the formal presentation of being the first crown jewel of Holly Springs. Did I not? Do you remember that? Do you remember that? And you too, you too. So congratulations, crown jewel. So with that, you guys have made a difference. Congratulations on your 20th year, provisimo, or whatever it is. Presented this day, 5th of September, 2017, Dick Sears. And you would like to say a few words? I know you would.
I will.
This is for you. Let's give her a big hand.
Thank you. I just want to say that 20 years ago, we came to the town and we started the, the ball rolling to make this dream come true. I was teaching at Washington Elementary as a dance specialist, and we had this idea that this was possible, and every person that we met was so positive, and it was like being in a town that was full of cheerleaders. And we're so thankful and so grateful, and it's really not just about Holly Springs School of Dance as an institution, but so much more about the people. And we are truly only as good as the people that enter our space every week, and we are so fortunate and so grateful. As I look through and see families that have, you know, where their children, I'm honored that they were with me at three years old, and then I got toe-washed. and then I got to watch them as young adults, as 18-year-olds go out into the world, and they're doing amazing things. But I'm so grateful to the people that put their trust and their belief in us, and I love Holly Springs, and I am so happy to be a part of it, and this means a lot to us, so thank you.
Thank you.
Before you leave it, how many kids did you have in the beginning? I kind of remember this, but I want you to tell us. Kids in the first time that they started school?
I had to have 80 students. I could quit my job as a dance specialist in Washington, at Washington Elementary, I had to have 80 students, I could just pay my bills, I wasn't going to make any money, but I could do that and raise my daughter. I had a six-month-old daughter at the time. So, that was then, and we're well over 1,000 students now.
1,000 students. Let's give them one more hand. Okay, moving right along. Item 6C, special recognition, Board of Adjustment, Oaths of Office, and Ms. Jody Powell.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It is my pleasure and privilege tonight to administer the oath of office to a new public official, Jeremy Hudson. Jeremy has been named an alternate member to the Board of Adjustment, and he's here this evening representing the extraterritorial jurisdiction of our community, which means he lives outside the city limits and doesn't have much to say, and a lot of things, but as a member of the Board of Adjustment, he can represent those underserved, those underrepresented folks. Would you like to come up, and I'll administer the oath to you? Call it up, because I have to read it. Place your right hand on the, or your left hand, and raise your right hand. Repeat after me, I'm going to do it in phrases.
Okay.
I state your name.
I, Jeremy Hudson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution.
And laws of the United States of America.
And laws of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a member of the Board of Adjustment.
As a member of the Board of Adjustment.
Of the town of Holly Springs.
Of the town of Holly Springs.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, you're now officially a member of the Board of Adjustment.
All right. Congratulations. Item 7A, request communication. This is a 9/11 dedication story, and I can't wait, and Chief Leroy Smith, please come forward. We had a peek at that today, before we went to the Harris Plant, we'll tell you about that another time. It was a great trip, and don't worry about the Harris Nuclear Plant, I'm just telling you that right now, don't worry about it.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I came to you tonight to invite you to the culmination of a four-year project that members of the Holly Springs Fire Department have been working on. A little history on the project, when I first got here, one of the things that I noticed is we did not have a firefighter's memorial. Through some back channels and some connections that I had, I was able to obtain a piece of steel from the World Trade Center, North Tower. From there, I delegated an assignment to several members of the department, Battalion Chief Jamie Holland being the lead, to come up with some idea to do a memorial. So, just a little history, obviously, everybody remembers September 11, 2001, our country was attacked by a terrorist group, Al Qaeda, who flew three planes into two separate buildings, and one was crashed in a field in Pennsylvania. A total of 2,996 people were killed in those attacks, including the 19 hijackers. There were 343 firefighters and paramedics killed at the World Trade Centers, 23 New York City police officers, 37 Port Authority police officers. At the Pentagon, 189 people were killed, including 64 on the American Airlines flight that crashed into the building. And then Flight 93, through the heroic actions of the people that were on that plane, they were able to overtake some of the hijackers and force that plane to crash into a field into Pennsylvania. So, the idea that the firefighters came back with is they wanted to make sure that those events of that day were memorialized for the next generation. So, they have built in-house a memorial, which we would like to unveil on September 11 of this year. And it will have the piece of steel, which will be accessible 24/7 for anybody who would like to come up and see it, touch it, be part of the memorial, but we're going to have an official unveiling on September 11, weather permitting, with the hurricane, obviously. And we would like to cordially invite everybody that can come, to come by for the ceremonies. It'll start at 9:30. We had been doing a symbolic flag lowering each of the times each of the towers went down, but we're going to keep our ceremony this year to just Fire Station 1, 700 Flint Point Lane. So, from 9:30 till about 1, we're going to be having stuff in and out. So, you all will get formal invitations, I'm here to invite you and the general public, if they'd like to stop by after September 11, to stop and see the memorial, anytime, you're more than welcome.
I think that's terrific. Awesome. Any questions or comments?
Just a quick question, if the, you did say, "weather permitting," if they do have to postpone it, how do, how does everybody find out?
We'll use the various social media avenues to get the word out, but we really won't know anything probably till later Thursday or Friday. We've been, we've been keeping an eye on the storm, and it's just right now, that cone of uncertainty is just too unpredictable right now.
Social media, or maybe text alert, okay.
That's correct. Anybody, any other questions?
I think we have one of our Holly Springs Police Department, Officer Clark, who was a, I think a first responder, John, am I correct? Do we have anybody else? I don't think so. Yeah, but he's a first responder, he's not here tonight, but he's terrific, and as are all the police and all the fire departments, so we think it's terrific, and we will, we will be there. God willing.
All right.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 7B, request communication, request for downtown area plan, Christine Kelly.
Did you need me to say my name again? Christine Kelly, 201 Grigsby Avenue. I'm here tonight as a resident, all right, click left, right, all right. My husband, Charles Kelly, and I are 201 Grigsby Avenue, and we received a notice regarding a public hearing that you'll be discussing tonight, around a pretty exciting project going on downtown. And being a resident that's adjacent, we're going to try to find out a little bit more about this project, just to give you an idea, our house, the red that you see there, that's our house there. So, when Aaron called me in June, and Aaron, Kendra, Elizabeth have been great, and Chuck have been giving me lots of information, so I'm working on trying to learn more along the way. But when Aaron called me in June, and I come to a lot of town hall meetings, he did share with me, for the first time I heard, that they would be closing, perhaps, closing part of Raleigh Street, and then maybe some one-way streets downtown. And that was new information for me, because I've lived downtown for years, and wanted to look a little bit more into it. So, this green area here is Christine's version of trying to overlay what I think is the downtown square that we just saw. But what I like to think about this project, I think about, this is one piece of this larger area, and this is the village district. So, as I looked into it a little bit more to find out more about what the village district is, there have been very, there's several versions of plans for the town to look at how to grow the downtown. And we love walking to local businesses and being part of downtown, so I'm excited about seeing some downtown projects. But the one thing that I was trying to think about is, well, how's this going to impact the downtown for all the residents? So, I started looking at the different plans. This one is the one I found, the comprehensive transportation plan, and this is on the website, so I went looking around, and that one did not talk about closing any roads, so that's why it was kind of a surprise to me to hear about that, because when you go look at the plans, I didn't see that. And this was dated June 2011, amended in 2013. In that particular plan, they do talk about traffic needs and current traffic, how folks are seeing how well things are going. And recently, if you think about some of the discussions on social media, and even coming to town council meeting, there has been some issues with traffic in terms of some frustrations in the volumes, and I think it's a consideration for the town to think about, what is it like today? You know, because these plans are many years old, and things have changed a lot since then, new subdivisions, new traffic patterns. So, then when I looked a little bit more, I found out the village district plan, which I went and looked at, and that one was updated in March of 2014, but underneath the transportation area, it talked about the downtown having less traffic because of the bypass, and so the traffic now has dropped to about 5,000 cars on Main Street, which is different than the village district new brochure that just came out, that talks about there being 10,000, over 10,000 cars a day on Main Street. So, it seems to me, and this is where, working with Kendra and Elizabeth, they've been saying, they have done a lot of work on transportation, and they have things that they have not updated on the website. So, as a resident, I didn't know what the current situation is. And so, when I was talking to them, I said, you know what, I really think about the town, I don't just think about our little area and our downtown village district, I think about the town, and how, how hard it is for me to get from one place to the other. Like, in the morning, if I want to go to, say, Target, I have to, I live at the end of Grigsby, take a right on Raleigh, take a left on Main Street, take a right, then take a left through the Four Oaks, the Four Oaks Bank parking lot, so I can take a left onto Ballantyne, because you can't go straight across, those kind of things. If I come home at night and Main Street's backed up, then I go through Windward Point, and then take a right on Holly Springs Road, and then take a left on Raleigh Street, and there's some other locals here, it's, it's a work of art to try to come home and go around town. And that's what I'm asking for, raise up and look at, what is the traffic like in town? And if we look at current numbers, what are the paths that we should look at to say, what makes the most sense for how people get around? Because I think people are pretty creative, there's the bypass, there's Main Street. And the point I want to make is, my husband and I will sit on the porch, there is a lot of traffic that goes down Raleigh Street that use it as a parallel to Main Street. And when I think about closing off Raleigh Street without knowing that we have a big plan, that, that would actually impact a lot of people driving around. So, what I'm looking for, and I would like to ask the town to consider, I was excited to hear about the Southern Area Planning Initiative that the town is approving, which is stepping back and giving a look at what is going on in that part of town, because it was known with Ave Fary and all of the, the new development and the change of the roads, it deserves the attention of the SAPI plan. What I'd like to do is say, can we also request the same thing for downtown? That the plans that we have on the website are dated, fortunately Kendra said, her and her and her team have done a lot of work, they probably have 75% of the data updated. Great, let's update it, let's get the residents involved, so we can find out exactly what's going on downtown, and take things into consideration, the traffic, look at how we want downtown to be a destination, we have some historic homes that we heard about, that we need to make that part of that plan, because we can't replace those, we only have them once. I know there's some streetlights coming, there's some crosswalks coming, that all has to be part of the same kind of big plan. And the bottom line is, we want to support smart growth for businesses and residents. Like I said, I'm excited to have more stores and opportunities to go to town, I think most people are, but let's just do it smart, because we don't want to ruin something that we can't repair after. So, that is my request, if the town will consider, consider that.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Any questions or comments?
Well, I'm just, I guess I'm a little confused, so Kendra, you said it's 75%, well, Christine said, that you said it was 75% done, the traffic, I mean, we have discussed this, and we've been, you know, solutions have been brought, not solutions, suggestions have been brought to us, but nothing has been decided, right? We haven't finalized any, any traffic plan, anything, so I don't, I just want to make sure we're not going to put anything up on, on our website, or we're not going to advertise anything until it's come to us, until we've, we've discussed it, and it's, is that correct?
Kendra?
So, part of this is Elizabeth's presentation for the Town Hall Commons Project, but we had a downtown transportation plan, it was draft, it came to council November 17 of 2015. It showed the idea of the draft with some of the one-way pairs, because the roads that we have now, they're not wide enough actually to facilitate ingress and egress. It had the closing of Raleigh Street, it had the expansion of Rogers Street, which was funded at a few of the council retreats, we talked about that. So, that is to be incorporated whenever we do the Vdapp update, that's where you really zoom into that area that Ms. Kelly had delineated. That plan would become part of that. That is, you know, we're working with, that's multi-departments that will be working on that document, there'll be a whole public process with that, but since we had the draft, it had been before council, as Town Hall Commons Project starts to come in, they start to implement some of those, the goals of that plan.
Right.
When we're talking about 75%, I think what Ms. Kelly might have been talking about was, we have traffic studies that were done at January of 15, January of 16, and then most recently with the Town Hall Commons Project. We're going to be updating those now that South Main Street's opened up, and the dynamics of Main Street may have changed a little bit, so we'll be updating that with a common study, but I think that's what she was talking about, like, some of the traffic information that she wants to see, and others want to see, she just wants it on the website, so that other people can get to it, I think is what she's.
And a comprehensive idea, so, like I said to Chuck when we were talking, this might make sense, closing Raleigh Street, but right now, with the information being dated and not really knowing, does it take current data in? I don't know.
Right, and that's why, that's why I was wondering, are we at that point, that we are able to put it on the website, or we still have, that's why I want to make sure that.
Right, so the TIA for the Town Hall Commons Development did model current traffic at that time, South Main wasn't open yet, but it did model Raleigh Street closed with those counts, and so that's part of that TIA that will be presented tonight, the results of that.
I know that closing of Raleigh Street, because the way it comes together with Rogers, I mean, many years ago, in open session, we did talk about the possibility and likelihood of closing that down, just because it's, the way that's aligned, I'm not sure how that all happened. Historically, but that it would just make good safety sense to close, close that stretch of it. But I know that we had discussed it in open session.
We discussed quite, quite a bit of it.
Several, several aspects of it.
So, as we start to move forward and decide to implement those, then we'll start to see, we can put some plans on, we can publicize those, okay?
Plans and opportunities for residents, because I know when I was talking to some of my neighbors, they, they weren't aware of it, and I live right there, if it wasn't for this being adjacent, I don't, I was not aware of it either. So, there's an awareness opportunity, I think, for something pretty drastic for downtown. Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Item 8A, public hearing, 17 SEU04, 17 MAS05, 17 WAV19, Town Hall Commons Detailed Master Plan. Sean Bryant.
Good evening.
And maybe Elizabeth.
Yes, Elizabeth will be coming up to go through some of the transportation items.
What? Sorry, Sean, we got two meetings going on. Not your fault. We just said that the girls, the cancer girls are coming back maybe, so if they show up, we'll take a little break and.
That's probably not a good. Sounds good.
The childhood cancer awareness.
Cancer awareness girls, excuse me, yeah, it's a better way to put it, yeah. In fact, I think there might be there.
Not yet.
There were girls, okay. I'm sorry, Sean, please go.
All right, next item on the agenda is a request for a special exception use and a detailed master plan, as well as a waiver for the project known as Town Hall Commons. This is a very exciting project for us, so we're happy to be here tonight to present this to you. The project location is generally south of Ballantyne Street, north of Oak Avenue, and then in between Ave Fary and Raleigh Streets outlined in red here. This has been the work of the past several months between town staff and several of the private landowners in this area to lay the framework for what will be future development of these parcels. This is a master plan, so it is just a general overview and establishment of that framework, so that individual development plans can come in behind that, and those development plans will show you specific layouts for parking lots, landscaping, and building design, so that's why you don't see that information. So that's why you don't see that information on the agenda tonight. But because it is in our Town Village zoning district, any new project does require a special exception use, so it can come forward to Town Council. And so that is what the special exception use is, is really to allow for this master plan to be approved in our downtown area. So this is some excerpts from our Village District Area Plan, which is our downtown land use plan. This image forms what is known as the core of the village district. The Main Street being the main corridor that runs north and south, and here's Ballantyne running east to west. And so the project area is generally this portion of this concept plan. This is just a concept, this was a vision, and the master plan helps put this vision into reality. And so our Village District Area Plan encourages the short-term investments, both public and private, and this project represents a public and private partnership with the landowners in this area. Our Village District Area Plan encourages us to consider a catalyst project, and by all means, this could be considered a catalyst to start more development in our downtown core area. And our Village District Area Plan encourages our main focus to be the development of this core. We encourage small, well-designed plazas, two- to four-story buildings, improved street patterns, on-street parking, and strong pedestrian connections. And so all these principles have gone into what is the Town Hall Commons master plan. And so I will briefly go through all these requirements. Village District Goals and Policies, allow land uses that generate demand for other land uses. So the development that will occur here will be restaurants, retail, office, those all drive demand for more restaurants, retail, and office in our downtown area. We want to require buildings to be close to Main Street. So these are the minimum and maximum building setbacks that are established by this master plan, minimum of five feet, maximum of 15 feet, to really bring those buildings close to the street edge. And so you can see the parcels marked with the letter B, those are the ones that are designated for buildings located primarily along Main Street. And then the parking to the rear of those buildings primarily along Avent Ferry Road. And this would be shared public parking to encourage properties not to have their own parking lots, but to take advantage of public parking opportunities, as well as increase the number of available parking spots we have to other businesses within our downtown area. So our Village District Area Plan wants to accommodate both vehicular and pedestrian traffic and create a more connected grid system. Elizabeth will be coming up later to talk more about the street pattern, but just to highlight Rogers Street being extended from its current terminus on Main Street across this area and connecting over to Avent Ferry Road here. And then to improve the safety of this intersection, removing this portion of Raleigh Street between Grigsby and Rogers Street. Provide on-street parking in areas that are accessible to businesses. So all these areas with the purple arrows will be where new on-street parking will be added to the streets downtown. Improve the streetscape and street aesthetics. The red line represents all of the existing or new sidewalks that will be built or improved around the master plan area, with our decorative herringbone pattern that you see out in front of Town Hall. So really trying to improve that downtown streetscape. As well as creating centralized stormwater management. So part of this project will be treating all of the stormwater for this entire area in one centralized location, rather than each building having their own separate device. And that leaves more room for buildings. Our Village District Area Plan encourages good architecture and building design. So typically with a master plan, we would have master architectural guidelines that lay out the various materials and colors that can be used for all the buildings. If you notice out at any of our shopping centers, all the buildings use primarily the same material. We are proposing a master architecture plan that goes along with this, however, it is very limited, so there's not too much detail, and that was done on purpose to give each building its own unique identity and create that unique urban atmosphere that we have desired for our downtown. As well as master sign plans, again, for the same purposes, to allow for all the buildings to have their own unique sign package, to create that unique identity for our downtown. This is the proposed landscaping. With all development downtown, street trees are required, so along Main Street we'll see new pink, purple, or pink crepe myrtles, as well as trident maples, and then golden rain trees and purple leaf plum along Avent Ferry Road. And those are street trees that have already been provided in our downtown area and help create that consistency amongst this development. There is one waiver that is being requested tonight, and that is for the off-street loading space. So we anticipate that the amount of commercial space that these properties will provide will need two off-street loading spaces. One is being provided along West Rogers Street, and that'll be a permanently dedicated loading space for vehicles to pull up UPS or making food deliveries. That is out of the travelway, so it won't block cars when it is parked there. The second loading space will be located along West Ballantyne Street in this location here. However, this one would not be permanent, it would be signed to be used only between 7:00 AM and 4:00 PM Monday through Friday. And then on nights and weekends, it could be two additional on-street parking spaces. And so the waiver is to allow for that loading space to work as both a loading space and a parking space when it's not being used for loading. With that, I'm going to invite Elizabeth up, and she can talk about the engineering requirements for this project.
Good evening. We'll start with utilities and then transition into the roadway items, since that's been a discussion already. For this project, the utilities, a lot of the infrastructure is already in place. We have water available on many of the adjacent streets, and a new water line will be extended along Rogers Street, the West Rogers Street portion here. The new water line will connect between the existing 16-inch line on South Main Street and go all the way to Avent Ferry. The sewer for this site also is going to tie into existing gravity sewer lines. The item of note is that there will be an existing gravity line along Avent Ferry Road that has to be relocated to accommodate this project, so that'll be done as a portion of this as well. From a roadway perspective, Kendra already spoke to several of the points I was going to be sharing, but to kind of give a little bit of background, the downtown area is an area that we needed to have some additional focus on the roadway network. It's something that the Comprehensive Transportation Plan addressed at a broad scale, and when we did the Village District Area Plan, we looked at it a little bit closer, but we didn't get into the exact cross-sections and all of the specifics of every one of the downtown streets. So back a few years ago, in November of 2015, the downtown transportation plan draft was brought before the Town Council for consideration in several things like converting one-way streets, items like removing this portion of Raleigh Street, a realignment of Rogers, but also adding this new roadway connection here, what we're calling West Rogers Street. Those were items that were in that plan. It was brought forward as a draft because it's something that will be rolled into the Village District Area Plan in the future, or could be a component of the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, depending on how things move forward. The plan was just that, it was lines on a plan, wanted to make sure that there was buy-in of the concept of the goals and intent of that. From there, there was a traffic study that was done to begin to identify what is the impact of changing those road cross-sections. When you change two-way sections to one-way, what does that do to the flow of traffic? So there was a traffic study done, it was completed back in the spring of 2016. That, as Kendra mentioned, did not take into account some of the most recent changes in traffic with the Main Street Extension Project. It is something that would need to be updated now that we have that change in traffic flow, but did identify these one-way cross-sections and addressed a lot of the needs that might be coming out of that. With those guides of the draft plan and the traffic study, this is the first project of a large scale that actually is touching those roads that start to show up on those plans. So this project is moving forward with the goals and intent of those plans, even though the Vdapp has not been fully updated with that information. This does show converting one-way streets. We know Center Street, and I liked to say it backwards earlier, it goes from Main Street to Avent Ferry Road. Ballantyne will come from Avent Ferry to Main. The goal of that is to make sure we've got one-way pairs. We need to, if we do this, we've got to do it systematically down the core of the downtown. Then that leaves us with Rogers Street being one-way, needs to go from Main Street to Avent Ferry. Those are the one-way streets that are affected by this project. The Rogers Street over here beside the churches would also be converted to match the new one-way street that Rogers will be here. With this intersection coming to play and having the fourth leg, came to be the time that we needed to address this intersection and the safety concerns that we're aware of, of knowing that there's a lot of points of decision in a very small area. So that is where it became evident that the Raleigh Street portion needed to be taken down, and this realignment of Rogers Street needed to happen at this time. So that's kind of some background and some, how we got to this point. This is the first plan that is showing these improvements. The road widening, general cross-sections are in conformance with the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. We talked about three-lane cross-sections, 41-foot width, and that's consistent. We talk about on-street parking in the Comprehensive Transportation Plan and the Village District Area Plan, and this is meeting those same intent of those goals. The choosing to do diagonal is a little bit different than what we have looked at previously, but works well with what this comprehensive project and master plan is looking at. So that's a little bit of the history. For this specific project, we are looking at Main Street having road widening continue down to the limits of the project. It is a curb line that's very close to what you see out there today. It will involve the wider sidewalk, the herringbone pattern, very much like what's in front of this building. The, already spoke to this being one-way, Rogers Street, and then Avent Ferry Road will have one side on-street parking, it will alternate which side it's on based off of which block you're in. So it does alternate. That was a lot of information on roadways. The environmental side of things is normally just information for you, but if there's any other questions, I will be happy to answer those at this time. Or, we do have the, I didn't speak to the traffic study for this particular project, that was the other item I wanted to make sure I addressed. The town took on this traffic study and we hired a consultant to do the traffic study on our behalf. This was done to make sure that we didn't have multiple traffic studies for multiple projects in a very short amount of time, that we were having to review and coordinate and have a more unified approach. That traffic study was done by Kim Lee Horn, and we do have the engineer who's done that for us here tonight. The two items that came out of that, there were two recommendations from this project. One was to monitor this intersection where Ballantyne and South Main Street come together. The need for a signal at this intersection will be evident in the coming, as traffic is added here. We need to monitor and install that signal when the time comes that it warrants it. With us taking over Main Street from DOT, that may be something that we have an ability to do on a different time schedule, but right now we have to work through those same processes that we've had in the past. So that's one area. Converting this to one-way really didn't affect that one way or the other. The other item that came out of the study was a turn lane that's come out of several other traffic studies at the intersection of Main Street and Holly Springs Road. It's the one going north on Main Street, making a right on Holly Springs Road. That is something we've looked at several times with several different projects. There has been a very intentional effort for downtown roads to not be widened beyond the 41-foot back-to-back cross-section, the three-lane cross-section, to maintain some of that downtown pedestrian accessible routes through this area. That is an area that we are watching and we're looking at closely, and as redevelopment continues to come along in the downtown area, if that corner in particular redevelops, then that could be looked at again to see if a right turn lane would be appropriate. At this time, as we've continued to evaluate it, it's not something that we would recommend with this project. So the recommendation would really be the likelihood of a signal in this location.
Did the traffic study, you're talking about signalization at Ballantyne and Main Street, did they look at any other intersection like Rogers to have it there versus Ballantyne or back up at Center possibly in terms of, why Ballantyne?
They did look at several intersections were a part of that. I may get Travis with Kim Lee Horn to come up and speak to the specifics of what were included and why Ballantyne came forward. It really comes down to the level of service of those two intersections, or those two streets intersecting.
While they're coming up, we're going to finish this up and then talk to you guys after, we're going to take a break, okay? You with me? Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Travis Fliwit with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. The recommendation for the signal at Ballantyne and Main was due to the traffic patterns. We saw, there are currently a lot of more people trying to turn left to go north on Main Street off Ballantyne, and expect that continue with these developments, particularly since the Rogers Street Extension will be one-way westbound. All the driveways for those, the two developments, and everybody trying to go north will kind of gravitate toward Ballantyne Street. The other option is to go south down to like Maple or Elm. So it just made more sense. Obviously, traffic will disperse as we, you know, complete this grid, but to be conservative, we signed most of that traffic out on Ballantyne Street, and that's why we expect that spot to meet signal warrants more than any of the others.
So it's just, it's going to result in more traffic going through that intersection?
Correct.
Trying to make turns one way or the other?
Correct.
So in your analysis, and you look at both buildings and the amount of businesses that are going to be there, that's where you...
Correct.
Okay. On both buildings, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Didn't, at one point, I guess November 17th, 2015, we talked about even possibly a roundabout at one of these intersections with a pretty fountain in the middle or something like that?
The roundabout comes up quite often of where it could go, where it should go, where it might need to go. At this point, we have continued to look at it even with this project, and it is not something that has been pursued.
Okay.
I don't know if you can speak anymore to the...
It got really close to the church. There's two churches on Rogers, and I think beside the church, it takes up a lot of room.
Very close to the...
If you do it at this intersection, that's the one that Aaron's speaking of.
I was wondering how you did it with, you do it with one-way streets too, it'd be kind of crazy, so...
You could do it with one-way streets. There are ways to do that. And then we did explore it down here as well.
It's too big.
It gets big very fast.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, how, on Ballantyne, what, how do you anticipate the laneage there? Is it going to be single lane, two lanes, which turn, which will turn left or right or straight?
So it'll be one-way coming up to the intersection. What we've been looking at is what happens if you were to put a signal in or not put a signal in, how would you need that lane, laneage to be? And right now, it's looking like we would have two lanes, and correct me if I'm wrong, one to the left and then straight into the right, as long as across the street stays two-way. Across the street doesn't matter for that item, but that's okay. It still would maintain that, so you go straight across.
And traffic, I mean, already can back up to that four-way stop sign without the businesses there. How do you anticipate handling that with the new business?
Yeah, converting it to one-way will actually help some of that, improve the efficiency of the intersection of Ballantyne and Main. That's part of why we recommended the signal, due to some of the queuing that we saw. The volumes look like they're going to be high enough to meet the signal warrants, but that, the queuing was one of our concerns as well. The analysis doesn't show, as I said, improved efficiency there, so the queues are expected to back up, continue to back up about to the four-way stop, but we didn't see them backing up through the intersection that often.
Okay. I think, from my experience there, most cars try to turn left, so that was why I was asking about the laneages, that we're still dealing with just one lane turning left, but with added traffic from the new businesses.
Yeah, so making it one-way allows us to do a separate left-turn lane and then a shared through-right lane to separate that traffic into two lanes rather than just one.
We good? Thank you.
All right, Sean.
So the planning board did review this project at their meeting last month. They are recommending approval, 801. The board really didn't have any issues or express any concerns about the project, they were pretty excited about it. They just had some questions about if there'd be any on-street parking on Main Street, which there will not be at this time, where town vehicle parking will be, and then why there aren't specific detailed architectural guidelines like other master plans have, as I had previously explained. explained, as well as some questions just about how the new street network, the one-ways would flow. But other than that, there were no concerns or issues discussed by the planning board.
Just like what you've got on there expressed excitement. That was, that's, that's a good point.
With that, if you have any more questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Anything else for Sean at this point, before we open the public hearing?
With the closure of Raleigh Street, what is to happen with that? Is it just be a dead end there, or?
Ask Elizabeth to come back up.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Twice?
So with Raleigh Street, make sure I'm speaking into this. With Raleigh Street going away in this portion, are you asking about how would this intersection be accommodated or just in general?
More so the remains of Raleigh that will be closed.
So typically what happens with right-of-way that's abandoned is that it reverts back to the original property owners, generally fifty-fifty unless there's some other underlying land, way of handling that prior to the right-of-way being dedicated.
So the street will just remain there unused?
It'll be removed as a part of this project. The demolition of the road will be removed. Yes, sorry. The road itself will go away and the right-of-way will go away.
I was just concerned about an eyesore or just an abandoned street there.
There are utilities there, so there will be easements maintained for the appropriate utilities underground, but the road itself, the asphalt will be removed.
Will there still be stop signs at each leg on this, on the road, or will you just be a free flow off Raleigh?
The goal is for this to be free flow through here. There may need to be some adjustments to this intersection to make that curve a little bit smoother. If it's able to be made as a free flow, then stop signs would not be needed.
Well, we have, we're going to open a public hearing in a second. Normally, I would say no, but yes. We're going to have two people comment on the, on the public hearing. If they don't cover what you want to cover, you have to get sworn in. This is sworn testimony. So I guess if you're a member there, sure, we could probably do that. Okay?
Thanks, Elizabeth. At this point in time, I'll open a public hearing, and actually, before we start...
Please.
Mr. Shafana, I was wondering if you could just share with us and everyone the meaning of the term qualified evidence in terms of this special exception use?
Sure. You, you have several different ways of making decisions. One is, the best one is legislative, where you do a zoning, a rezoning, and that, those decisions really cannot be reviewed by a court, by anybody else. This particular decision-making that you go through in a special exception is when you, it's quasi-judicial in nature, and you're sitting sort of like a court, and you hear evidence that's from sworn testimony from people that, that have some sort of knowledge on the subject at hand. So you are to look, the case law in these types of decisions tell us that you are to look at competent and material evidence, and you've got, you five are the arbiters of what is competent and what is material. So it is, you know, it is a little bit, a little bit difficult at times for you to filter out what it, what you all hear sometimes as, as evidence that may not meet that standard. But, you know, if you, if you have any questions, you know, a typical example would be, you know, I own property here, but I live out in California, you know, but I want to tell you I don't want any more traffic in front of my place because the traffic is really bad, even though I don't really know that it is. So, you know, I don't, you know, somebody told me that the property in front of my, the traffic in front of my property is really bad. That would be an example of non-competent evidence. So, you know, but people certainly that live in town, that can provide firsthand information is typically, typically considered competent, but you've got to take it for what it, how it's presented because most, most landowners aren't traffic engineers, and the question of there's too much traffic might be one that an expert, you would rather rely on an expert to tell you what, what too much traffic is.
Thank you. Anything else before? At this point in time, I'll open a public hearing, and Christine, are you wanting to speak again? Sorry?
Christine Kelly, 201 Grigsby Avenue. I was sworn in. What I just presented, I don't know, do I need to restate that to make it part of fact that the plans that I was looking at for traffic are dated, might not have current numbers?
I think you already stated that, yes.
Well, I didn't know if I had to restate it to be part of this testimony or not.
Doesn't matter. I guess it could be.
Yeah, I mean, if, to the extent that your testimony, you want to provide testimony as to the findings of fact that are required to determine whether or not this special exception use meets the findings of fact, then you would need to testify again.
Okay. I'll fast-track it. I am excited about this catalyst project. I cannot wait to go and eat and shop and drink in these local places. So I want to make sure that you understand that, that I'm really looking forward to a new vibrant downtown. Nowhere in even talking with Aaron and June did I realize that this is actually not, to me, as much right now about this, this downtown building and this great center, but a restructure of traffic downtown and the impact that that will have on the people. And what you guys are talking about is maybe even taking a corner of our yard. We're not even talking about that. I'm more worried about, I mean, as I sit on my porch and I see the traffic that's coming through, it is a perilous thoroughway for major traffic through Holly Springs. That's how Main Street's being used. And I would hope that Chief Herring has numbers. I have heard and seen accidents at the corner of Ballantyne and Main Street. I've yet to see anything at Rogers, but I get the safety part. I want safety. I don't see that as the issue right now, and I'm thinking is, are there not other ways that we could look at this? I mean, it seems like we're restructuring a whole bunch for this wonderful project. Did you look at maybe having Raleigh Street continue straight instead of having it cut off? I mean, it feels like from a draft that was spoke of November of 2015, and only because I was a resident next door that I get notified, and all of a sudden, it sounds like tonight you're going to vote about redoing the roads downtown? That concerns me a lot, and I would think that something of this magnitude, it was not advertised as a major restructure of downtown roads. It was advertised as a new complex downtown, which I think a lot of people would be excited about. So I beg of you to please consider the impact that this has have on the locals and look at it that way. This is a major traffic change for town. Please involve the community and let people know. It's not just the people right beside it, it's the people all through downtown, through Wenwood Point, through Remington. We're all impacted by this. Again, I'm excited about a new downtown, but, and this might make sense down the road, but I don't think we're ready to start closing off roads until we know what the heck's going on in town. That is my plea. And that's why, going back to what I just said before in that other section, can we please do a downtown, updated downtown plan? Because obviously, what we see on the websites, they're not all together, they're not following the same map. Show me an integrated plan with the routes, the volume of the traffic, where the proposed stoplights are, all of that. That's this big. It should be more than just, it's more than just this building. You're impacting us for generations to come.
Okay, thank you. Jonathan Gibbons? Name and address again, Jonathan.
Jonathan Gibbons, 217, 213 West Ballantyne Street. Been a number of years since I've been up here, but I know some of you guys. I have major concerns with the preliminary plan in regards to how it affects property on 213 Ballantyne Street. There is an entrance to the property that is shown removed, that was approved by the town for the parking area there. I think will have a very negative impact on existing business there due to traffic flow, as was stated by your traffic expert here. Ballantyne Street is a nightmare, not just coming to Main Street, but getting to Avent Ferry from the library. Entrance from leaving the business, attempting to leave is as difficult if you want to get out on the Ballantyne Street. So a lot of people exit out the rear on Avent Ferry. It is not shown on the preliminary plan. Again, I want to state that that was in the approval for that business, for that entrance there by the town. And the first time that I saw it was going to be removed, was when I saw the preliminary plan, and I want to thank Aaron for taking the time to meet with me and listen to my concerns, but that is my main concern. Again, this, as we all know, as this grows, that driveway will go away because as in what was presented for the development of that area, that whole area is going to be essentially bulldozed at some point, and new buildings will be constructed. I think at that point would be the time to remove that driveway. Until that time, I think it needs to be there. I'm really concerned about the traffic flow in the area. I'll say fortunately, I'm not in town that much, so I don't have to deal with it, but I live there, and when I am in town, it is, it is a pain, and I'll say it like that. But I think that there, that, having been here for, what, since ninety, I think, and every time I come home for a week or two, it's like it's more and more parking lot. And so I think it really, really needs to be looked at as far as traffic flow. I can understand the one-way streets in, in some areas, have no issue with that, but I want to really draw your attention to the, in the preliminary plan about the entrance off of that and how it will have a negative effect on existing business, an existing business. And, and I've had that building for a number of years. In fact, a lot of years, I leased space to the town because there was no other office space in Holly Springs. And when I came, there was really, there was things here, but, but nothing that, that provided space that needed to be used for businesses. So please keep that in mind, and if it continues down this route, you'll be seeing me more regarding this issue.
All right. Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Jonathan. Do you want to speak? Linda? Obviously, we don't normally do this, but in this case, since I've met before, we're going to find the Bible. There it is. Thank you, Joanie.
Was not prepared for this. Tina Rimmer, 237 Raleigh Street. Not composed, I'm very emotional. This has all came, it came as a big surprise. I didn't know anything about this. I've been here on Raleigh Street for twenty-eight years, and I'm actually appalled that I wasn't notified, that I wasn't asked. I've sat on that porch for twenty-eight years. I'm not an engineer, but I can tell you what the traffic's like. I can tell you the comments I get every day about my home and my gardens and what it does for people at the end of their day to see it. I can tell you that people crave it. They want this town to have that feel that this town doesn't seem to get. I hear this urban feel. I hear you talk about closing a street and keeping up a spot where utilities remain. People, this is the historic street in Holly Springs, Raleigh Street. It's a few homes left, a church, a Masonic building. It's more than just a street with utilities. You talk about maintaining that spot? The town doesn't maintain, they don't maintain it now. My husband cuts that grass across my home on property that does not belong to us. I keep up the grounds at that lodge because I care about that street and about my town. I vote for you to represent me and my town, and the fact that you did not even feel the need to ask me how I felt or my input is very disappointing. I could have gotten a notice. I beg you to rethink this. People want it. That's what you're hearing them say. They don't want these big brick gaudy buildings. They want this old-time charm. I've offered, I'll volunteer, I'll do planters downtown. I'll, I'll do whatever it takes, but I can't do it alone, and you've got to want to save this stuff. I have gathered bricks from every building that's been torn down in this town. I have a pad in front of my gate. I have lights in my home. I have a mantle, I have a window from the historic Mims. Every single building that's been torn down, I've salvaged materials, and it's either in my home or in my yard. My children have photographs of them hugging a tree that was torn down when they were small children, trying to preserve a tree. There's nothing, if we don't save it, I mean, there's nothing to share about the history. Please, I beg you to rethink this. Get involved. People want to know. I mean, I just, I'm shocked. I just, honestly, I wish I wasn't this emotional so I could be more thorough, but I'm just so caught off guard. Like I said, I'll get up committees. We'll, we'll do whatever it takes. Save that home. I'll do fundraising. I'll do, I'll get people involved. We'll do the manpower. I've got things that I'm willing to donate to that Nita Morris for a museum for Holly Springs. I have so many things, photographs, everything, a bench that sat in front of the original Mims store with pictures of our residents, children eating ice cream cones. I would donate that bench. We could have a museum. I have so many things I could put in there. Just, please, just try to preserve it. I'm begging, I just, it breaks my heart. Really and truly does.
Thank you for your input. Thank you.
At this point in time, we're going to close the public hearing. Any further discussion from the board?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just, just to be clear, what's before you tonight is, is the development plan for the downtown, which shows that very small portion of Raleigh Street being closed that, that was indicated. There will be a public hearing once the actual closure goes through. There will be a public hearing on the closure, you know?
Whether or not, you mean? Whether or not?
Uh, that's correct. There will, yeah, before the closure is effectuated, there will, there will be a public hearing to effectuate that closure, so.
So this is not the public hearing?
We're not closing the road.
Not closing Rogers Street. This is approving a plan for the, the commercial property, the overall master plan, and, you know, that the findings of fact that are required is that, that the proposed use isn't injurious, injurious to the public health, safety, and welfare, and doesn't defy the community standards, and those, those are, that's what you're looking for in the testimony.
And that is when, when they do that, the public hearing for that specific piece, is when we'll know more about what is going to be done, what they want to do with it. Is that correct?
I'm not sure which piece...
I mean, the closing of Raleigh Street. I think that, it sounds like what I'm hearing is that it is confusion as to why it's going to be closed and what's going to be done with that part once it's closed, things like that, but that's not specifically what we're talking about tonight, correct?
Well, I mean, if, if the town were to follow the development plan that you're going to either approve or not approve tonight, one of those components would be to close Rogers Street or to not do, to amend it. I mean, that's, that's certainly possible, but I think you've, you've heard from engineers that, of the wisdom of, of following the development plan, otherwise it... the wisdom of following the development plan, otherwise that plan wouldn't be before you. So, you know, it is, it's just that section from Grigsby to the V where it meets it behind the car wash where New Roger Street is going to go.
Thank you. Okay. With that in mind, further discussion? Or questions?
So, the traffic analysis hasn't been completed, right?
Yes, the TIA was completed that showed the new development. It counted Holly Springs and Main Street, like as far north as Holly Springs and Main Street, Raleigh, Grigsby, Main Street, Ballantyne. Like, all the intersections that were studied are in the TIA with the small portion closed behind the car wash. And it modeled that traffic with the added two developments. Is that what you're asking?
Well, I think Ms. Kelly had stated that you only had 75%.
Yeah, this TIA is complete. This TIA was done before South Main opened. Remember, South Main opened like a few weeks ago?
Yeah.
This TIA, their traffic counts were done prior to the opening of South Main. So we're going to go back and update the whole downtown area with the new South Main numbers. That's the only component in this completed TIA that's not today actual, just because the study was done prior to South Main opening.
Well, that, do you have any idea if that'll, how that will affect traffic once we do update it?
So, we've all traveled Main Street the last couple of weeks. I spend a lot of time out there. I have not counted it. I don't, I haven't noticed abundance more traffic since South Main opened. But we haven't counted it, so I don't have the actual data. So that's not, I mean, I don't think that that traffic would change the results of this TIA. But, I mean, we modeled Raleigh Street closed, that short section, and it didn't show anything other than the signal at Ballantyne and Main.
How much control now do we have over that intersection? We don't have to wait for NC DOT to put a light there, or do we have more say in that?
Right. So, the last town council meeting, y'all voted to take over maintenance, and there's a process. So, we send that petition with a resolution to DOT. It has to be approved by DOT, and it has to go to the DOT Board of Transportation to make it final. And then, once we get that, then we would have ownership of Main Street, and we would be able to put a signal. It would be our only town-maintained signal. All the other signals are maintained by the Department of Transportation.
And based on that, with that in mind, there was some possibility of closing Main Street for, with the closing of Raleigh, do we anticipate distribution of the traffic around that area to be affected? Or is it, will we have other alternatives?
When we talked to Travis from Kimley Horn, he modeled that small section of Raleigh behind the car wash to be closed. He ran the synchroanalysis, and the only thing it showed, it redistributed traffic, like, instead of traffic going up Raleigh, he kept it on Main Street. The only result was the signal weren't. Oh, are you talking about festivals? Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you, Elizabeth. No, we do not have a TIA that models closing Main Street for the truck rodeos and that sort of Saturday morning events. We have not paid to have a TIA do that.
All right, just more out of curiosity, given that little bypass would be closed with Raleigh.
Just so I, I'm a little confused. We're not closed, the plan, even though we're going to do that later anyway, but the plan that we're talking about tonight is a piece of Raleigh Street, not all of Raleigh Street. Define that piece for me, if you would.
Okay, the piece that is included in the development plan?
That's what I was hoping for. Thank you. I'm watching.
I think this one may be a better one to show it on. It shows a little bit broader scale. So Raleigh Street comes from Holly Springs Road all the way down to Main Street.
All right.
The only portion that is being discussed closing now or at any point in the discussions we've had on downtown roads is the portion from Grigsby to Main. This small portion here, there's not been any discussion about anything north of this intersection.
Where's the church again on that for me?
So there are churches.
I know one area.
Here and here.
The Baptist.
The, so this is Town Hall.
Right.
This is the Baptist Church. And Center Street is up above this screen.
Just need a little clearer definition. I think you answered my question. All right, thank you. All right, further questions or comments?
John, in your presentation, do you have some of the, some of these, any of the renderings of these, things like the benches and trashcans and any of the architectural features?
I don't have the street furniture on the slides, but it's the typical black metal street bench that we have along Avent Ferry Road and on Main Street, black trashcan as well, the decorative lighting fixtures. So the teardrop lights that are in front of Town Hall, those will be the streetlight fixtures that will be added. Included in your packet was a page in the plan set that had all of those furniture items on it.
Yeah, I was hoping maybe it was there.
I did not. So, next step, if this is approved, will be the individual development plans for each of the multiple components, and that will have the more specific details, including the streetlights and the street furniture and what the buildings will look like.
Because, you know, in terms of improving the street scape and aesthetics and all that sorts, I figured that was probably a good something to, good thing to share with folks here. But based on the photos, I'd say it's definitely a good thing.
It's the same fixtures, the decorative black.
All right, now that we've defined the issue on Raleigh Street to...
Well, I'm just curious, are we, if we are voting, what we're voting on now, does that mean if it passes that we're closing Raleigh Street?
No.
No.
Am I correct on that, Counselor?
That's correct. There'd have to be another public hearing to actually physically close it.
Okay.
And you can, at that point, do either option. If you do, if you choose not to close it, you're not following the development plan, so we'd probably have to amend the development plan. That may be another step. But if you, at the time, of your public hearing to close Roger Street, hear some compelling evidence of this problem in closing Roger Street, then, you know, you can choose to not do that.
Raleigh Street. Raleigh Street, okay. All right.
Well, I'm going to ask one more time of, anybody, Ken or Elizabeth, if you can explain why we are, why it's been recommended to close off Raleigh Street?
Portion.
The portion, that small portion. Sorry, not, yeah.
Just a small, right near the car wash.
One little block.
Okay, so where this first began was, you know, in looking at it, it just didn't appear to close Raleigh Street. Here, Roger Street, West Roger Street, does not exist. When we started looking at this whole Town Hall Common Square, there's quite a bit of distance between Ballantyne. You go all the way down to Elm Street before you get to your next block. So we looked in the master planning. We wanted to see a block created. It's on street parking. It starts to break up the blocks. It provides a sense of place and build in the downtown area. So Roger Street was planned to be extended in this area here. When you look at that, you have the Roger Street existing today, how it comes in at an angle to Roger Street. Whenever you're designing intersections, you want the intersections to turn at a 90-degree angle. So, we've done this around town in different projects, as you, Optimus Farm and Sunset Lake Road, Cass Halt and Avent Ferry, Pine Grove and Avent Ferry. You always try to turn them at 90-degree angles. So you think about it when you're in a car, you look right, you look left, and you can, your line of sight is safer. Today, when you're at that intersection and you're trying to turn left, say to go to Walmart, to go south on Main Street, you about have to break your neck to look over your shoulder to the right. We're creating a four-leg intersection, and so we look at safety. That is one of the ethics in engineering is public welfare and safety, and that is not a safe intersection adding a fourth leg to it. So we started looking at if we tie Roger Street in, make that one way. Today, it's a two-way street, but on a lot of time, there's on-street parking where it effectively becomes a one lane. So, in with our downtown plan, it was, you know, making that a one way. It provides parking for the church. It also reduces the amount of cut-through traffic through the church street as well. So we looked at realigning Rogers, and then how do you tie in Raleigh Street? If we do this at a 90, you can't come in at an angle in the curb line. Most times, what we would do is you would realign it at a safe distance back to Rogers. Well, there are these historic buildings that we want to save, and so you can't really realign Raleigh Street. So that's where the idea became, you know, it's right here behind the car wash. There's, you know, when we say major streets, you know, the count of that, closing it didn't make a difference on the Main Street counts. So that's where we looked at closing that, pulling up the asphalt, putting grass down, and making that area, you know, not a street. That's where we came with that idea of that short section. So I don't know if I've answered.
Yeah, I just want, I just wanted to explain it a little bit, a little bit more detail.
Okay. Anything else?
And actually, I have to assume that people coming north, you know, from Fuquay, and if they want to, a lot of people make that right turn right by the car wash and take Raleigh Street. I think that would pretty much eliminate that traffic going north.
That's true. Again, we're looking at that at a future public hearing. Did I get that correct? Okay.
So we can, if this was to be approved, the future public hearing, we, it would be a change to the development, but we could?
You could do it. That's correct, as I understand it. Correct? Okay.
And that's kind of...
I don't want to underscore, though, if you approve this plan, that needs to be seriously considered because I don't think as staff, we would be recommending adding West Roger Street if that street were going to remain in place because of those safety concerns. And I think, I think so, we approve the master plan tonight, that doesn't mean Raleigh Street's closed tomorrow or any section of it. That's correct. There will be a separate process set up for that, but we will be recommending, if we're going to proceed with West Roger Street, the closure of that street. Based on every conversation that I've had for the last three years with staff, that has been, that has consistently been the recommendation.
Okay.
I think, I think basically that the purpose of plans is to, it's something to be followed as far as, well, planning. But then, the reason you move away from plans is if something better comes along, or there's a better development, better building, whatever it is, it's always something that is better. You never move away from a plan for something that's worse.
Correct. And we, and I think the steps, and, you know, we have requested that Main Street, that DOT give up maintenance of Main Street and a section of Avent Ferry. Once we get control of that, then we could further reduce speed limit. We could put a traffic signal at Ballantyne once, you know, the town feels like it meets merits, not when DOT feels like it meets merits. So I think that added control is something that we would consider along with, you know, the Raleigh Street section closure. I think we would also want to recommend looking at a traffic signal to probably coincide with that. We don't want to do anything to, you know, to make, you know, create an unsafe movement in our downtown. That's the last thing we want to do.
And so the car wash would only have entrance on Main Street and exiting onto Main Street? They wouldn't be able to? Right?
I believe that would be correct. I mean, yes.
We've shared that with the property owner.
With them? Okay, all right.
And he, and he, the property owner does support the closure of that section of Raleigh Street.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
Yeah, just a final question. Any idea when we'll have the updated TIA with the new numbers?
So, you're talking about adding the South Main counts. Probably within three, four weeks possibly. We've got to get the counters. We've just started talking about that since South Main just opened, so we'll be moving forward with that. The other thing I just did want to mention, changing Rogers to one way. Erin has met with both of those churches countless times. Lots of, there's lots of different members and entities, and so we have continued to keep them in the loop. They're supportive of the one way. They see the merits, and having one way, cut-through traffic is a problem for them and the safety, and it allows them to have on-street parking. So I just, that's something that hasn't been mentioned, so I just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Good. Ready for some motions? There are four.
I can start.
Sure.
Motion to make and accept the findings of fact to be recorded in the minutes for special exception use petition number 17 SEU-04 for Town Hall Commons Public Parking to allow for a new project in the TV Town Village District as submitted by CLH Design PA.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Number two.
Motion to make and accept the findings of fact to be recorded in the minutes for a waiver of UDO regulations to allow for the off-street loading space on West Ballantyne Street to be signed for a commercial loading zone 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and as a regular on-street parking at other times in association with the master plan for Town Hall Commons Public Parking.
Second.
Motion made in second, again, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number three.
Having made the necessary findings of fact, motion to approve UDO waiver 17 WAV-19 to allow for the off-street loading on West Ballantyne Street to be signed for a commercial loading zone between 7:00 AM and 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and as regular on-street parking at all other times in association with the master plan for Town Hall Commons Public Parking.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Number four, and last.
Having made the necessary findings of fact, motion to approve special exemption use 17-SEU-04 to allow for a new project in the Town Village District and to approve detailed master plan 17-MAS-05 for Town Hall Commons Public Parking as submitted by CLH Design PA with conditions as listed in the agenda packets.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. We're going to take that break now. Sorry it took so long. But if the ladies want to come forward...
Should we get them again?
Pardon me? Yeah, we'll go back.
Okay.
As it relates to cancer awareness.
So, as, for those of you who are here from the beginning, Megan Forsthal is one of three high schoolers with the Health Occupational Students of America in Holly Springs High School who is wanting to bring awareness to childhood cancer. And before we give the proclamation, Megan, would you mind just telling everybody what your plans are?
Yes. So we have a few events set up already just to kind of bring awareness of childhood cancer. We would like to have like a walk just to bring the whole community together and kind of show the community that we're all coming together for like a certain cause. We also have a farmer's market. We have dates set up for it just to kind of also show the community that we have certain events showed up, like already made, and also just showing them, talking to them about the actual topic of childhood cancer and kind of leading more into like bringing them more aware. And then we also would like to have a tree in dedication to childhood cancer, obviously, but just to have the community come together and show their support for this topic, which we were thinking putting like ribbons or some sort of like gold because that is a color for childhood cancer on the tree just to kind of make it aware to the whole community that we're doing this project.
Well, we have something for you. First of all, they've all heard of this, so I'm just going to...
First of all, they've all heard of this, so I'm just going to give you the proclamation for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and you get to keep this.
Thank you so much.
All right? And show it to your friends, Megan, okay? And it's got a seal on it and light, well, but the real issue here is the tree. And as I showed these before, we have something to put on your tree.
Thank you.
There's three of them, three for you. I love these things. Can I get some of these too, Joni?
Absolutely.
All right. And then, my size. Ah ha, I beat you, Jim.
Didn't say a thing.
So, these are for you, and take these back to the other two ladies we talked about.
Thank you so much.
And that's for you.
Perfect.
Let's give her a hand. Thank you, Megan.
And Megan, the tree, if you look on the map, up there is the tree in the northwest corner of the Cultural Center. It's the one we used for the tree lighting at Christmas. So, y'all can use that tree and have everybody put wind chimes on it and gold ribbons and celebrate those strong and resilient children who face their battles with cancer.
It'll be beautiful.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you so much.
Okay, getting back into action here on Agenda Item 8B, Public Hearing Development Agreement, Malbec LLC, Arina Kostanovich.
I know you were. I thought I beat you to it, and I did. You were going to play?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, the next agenda item before you is a development agreement between the town of Holly Springs and Malbec LLC. We do feel that this project is a result of our continuing effort to try to bring more development in the downtown Village District area. I am glad to let you know that you all know the developer of this project, as John Harrell and Chris Harrell are the owners and operators of the coworking station next door. So, coworking station, as you know, is now home of over 20 businesses, and yes, they do have a waiting list, and they would like to expand. So, this project kind of comes as a result of that as well. So, the property that Harrell Brothers own is located right between, is the part of the master plan that was just approved by you, and it's located between the about 55 Main Street, South Main Street, and Avent Ferry Road. The developer is constructing 50,000 to 60,000 square feet of the commercial building, and the town is building a public parking, tabletop parking to serve this project, as well as the other projects in this area, future in this area. So, this 50,000 to 60,000 square feet commercial building will be a three-story. First floor, first floor will be dedicated to retail, restaurants, active-use space. Second floor is the office space that will be accommodating also the expansion of the coworking station. And the third story will have an office, as well as the rooftop bar restaurant area. So, you have the agreement in front of you, and I will just try to go through a few highlights. And then, if you have any questions, we also have a developer here as well to answer them. We are taking into consideration the economic impact of this commercial project, and that's not just the capital investment with this commercial project, but as much as focused as we are putting on the retention of the jobs that we already do have in the downtown area with coworking station, as well as being able to now bring more new jobs to the Village District. And I'm telling you that I'm definitely not speaking just on behalf of the coworking station. We have several businesses that are bursting in the space that they have in the downtown right now, and they, if it wasn't for these few commercial projects, they would have to pack and leave Holly Springs, because we don't have an existing space in Holly Springs. So, this way, they're able to work with the developer to make this, their new home, and expand and bring more jobs to Holly Springs. And also, in order to satisfy the DDI, which is the Downtown Development Investment Policy that this developer will not apply for, it's done through this development agreement. Both parties have agreed that the developer should be entitled to the reimbursement of 50% of the town charged development fees. Also, there will be a property swap that is explained and mentioned in this agreement, and I'll try to explain. As you remember from the master plan, there will be extension of the Rogers Street, West Rogers Street. It will connect Main Street with Avent Ferry Road. So, there is a parcel of the town-owned property along Avent Ferry. It's roughly about .7 acres. That will be acquired by the developer for the successful completion of the commercial project to provide adequate parking, public parking to serve this project. In the exchange, the board parties have agreed that the town will, the town will acquire the portion of the developer's property that, and that will be recombined with the town's remaining property for the installation of the infrastructure improvements, which in this case is the extension of the Rogers Street. So, that's kind of shown a little bit better on this master plan, right here. So, this portion of the town's own property now, the developer will own, and they will design and construct roughly about 65 parking spaces to serve their building. The town is looking into ways to provide, to constantly provide public parking, adequate public parking for the, in the Village District. So, we are looking to lease back that parking for about 20 years, and for the price of the maintaining the landscaping and the pavement, and this will be done through an annual contract in the same manner that the town has done with the other town parking facilities. Also, I want to go back to this. As you can see here, at the town's request, the developer has acquired a small corner lot off of South Main Street, and why we requested that, we really wanted to increase the building frontage on the Main Street side, as that's kind of the block that we are building the downtown. And so, the developer has agreed to purchase and acquire that property from, that is owned by the Holly Springs United Church of Christ. So, as a result of this change, there is a certain overhead power lines that need to be relocated or buried. And the cost estimate, we are working with Duke on this, and the cost estimate that we have received from them is roughly from $120,000 to $180,000. And the town has agreed to reimburse the developer for the actual construction cost that's relating to this relocation in the amount of $50,000, 50% or $100,000, whichever is less. So, that kind of highlights and summarizes the agreement, but if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. And as well, we have, as I mentioned, Chris and John here to answer your questions as well.
Questions at this point, Arina?
So, we're looking at basically 50% of the power line cost or $100,000, whichever is less.
That's correct.
We're looking at 50% of any town-charged fee.
Correct.
And do we have an idea of an estimate of how much that is? It made reference to.
Our best.
So, if there was anything there.
It's our best estimate that this could be from, in the amount of $50,000 to $60,000.
Okay. So, we're looking at upward liability for the town of $160,000 approximately, in terms of what we potentially have to reimburse.
And I do, again, want to say that this was town's request for them to acquire that additional piece of property, because we did feel that, that, I don't know, have you guys noticed that the power pole that's located, that would be located right in front of their building? It is probably the biggest power pole you have seen in your life, and it's definitely something if, that is not consistent with the look of the Main Street that we are anticipating. So, they actually partnered with us in that.
Just, you know, want to make clarity in terms of the costs that's being asked, that we're being asked there.
Yes.
So, it's $60,000 roughly for our fees and $50,000 for the poles. It's 110, right?
No, 50% of the actual cost, which we don't know exactly right now. The estimates that we are getting from Duke is.
Is that 100?
120 to 180.
Okay.
So, we said 50% of that.
Okay.
Up to a cap of $100,000 on.
Yes, that's the absolute cap.
Up to, yeah. All right.
Anything else? At this point in time, then, we'll open a public hearing, and if there's no one signed up, so we'll close the public hearing for discussion. See you, man.
I'm excited about the project.
This is a very exciting project.
It's exciting. It's a continuation of, you know, the current project going on next to Town Hall. It's just, you know, a logical extension and brings new vibrancy to downtown. So, I mean.
Totally agree.
It's a reasonable price to pay.
And we have a great partnership with the Harrell family. I mean, they own and operate the coworking station, and when they started here, nobody could imagine that they would have a waiting list for that space and now even to expand.
They've done a good, proven track record in terms of encouraging entrepreneurial activities, and it's exciting. So, thank you.
All right. Let's go to motions. There is one.
I'll make the motion to enter into a development agreement with property owner Malbec LLC, Holly Springs, for property exchange, construction of a parking deck, and waiver or reimbursement of fees for a downtown area development, and construction of a non-residential use at the intersection of South Main Street and Rogers Street.
Second. Motion made in second, all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you.
Closest we've come to anything downtown.
And, no, it's exciting.
We're on our way. We're on our way. Gen item 9A, consent agenda, Mayor Portman.
Motion to adopt the consent agenda, police.
Second.
Motion made in second, all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Agenda item 10A, unfinished business, 16 DP-09, downtown square, townhomes, Matt Beard, Rachel, Elizabeth, anybody else?
Got the whole crew on this one.
I'll let you go.
Okay, so, this was a project last brought before you on April 4th of this year. This is a townhome project located on West Holly Springs Road. The zoning commitment as part of the RMF-8 conditional use approval, largely tied to establishment of an undisturbed buffer, additional plantings, and to allow for apartments, condominiums on the property. The biggest difference between this project and what you saw from it before is this addition of the access road. That is a full access from West Holly Springs Road that is outside of the previous project As a reminder, that was why the project was tabled in the first place. There were concerns over transportation and accessibility.
Safety.
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 That's right.
That's it, safety.
So, those changes were required of them to, before they could bring it back. They made the changes, and here we are. Nothing else has changed with the project. So, if we want to go back through the planning board discussion that you've seen before, again, primarily, there were primarily concerns of safety, as you stated. Again, planning board recommended in denial, five to three. And then, when it came to the public hearing in April, there were a number of residents of the neighboring community that expressed some concern over cut-through traffic. Elizabeth wants to speak to interconnectivity and road networking, if you have any questions of her. She doesn't need to, if you don't.
So, is that road still coming through?
Hello?
So, go ahead, you do it.
Go forward.
So, Tulak Way will be still an access point to cut through, or?
Wasn't sure if you guys wanted the applicant to explain their proposal back to you first, or if you want me to speak to their recommend, I mean, they're responding to your questions, so we can let them answer that, and I can speak to town standards, or I can explain what they presented to us.
But it appears as if that new road.
You can turn.
You can turn left into it.
Correct.
Right. It's at the far enough, it's far enough distance between.
It is at the appropriate location for a full access point.
That's what we talked about. Where the original plan was two and a half years ago, or almost three years ago, was presented, had that, that access road there.
This one kind of speaks to the existing Tulak, and the proposed access point would be able to be the other full access place.
So, what happens with Greymar?
The condition that was added to the plan that reflects the discussion at the last meeting was that the Greymar would be constructed as required. It would be temporarily blocked off for construction traffic until 90%.
Of the units were completed.
Of the units were, of the COs were obtained. So, that gets the majority of the construction complete before it is open, but it would be opened upon the completion of the construction.
So, it doesn't take away, because the current concerns I remember hearing were Greymar becoming a cut-through for people. So, even, so now we have that other one, but I don't see people coming down Greymar and going all through the neighborhood to come out the other. I mean, I guess they could.
So, I think a couple of the concerns were, how do you access the new development efficiently and safely? Prior to this road being shown, the right-in, right-out was requiring people to come to Tulak, come through Oak Hall to access the site, or to make a U-turn at a place that's not quite wide enough, because the full cross-section's not in place, to make a U-turn to come into the site. With this location here, coming off the bypass, you can come to the site, make a left-in or a right-in, sorry, either way, and access the site fully from this location. Or, if you're coming from this way, you could still come and make a right-in to this development and access it directly.
Through Greymar.
If there's existing residents in Oak Hall that are accessing, trying to disperse and get out of the subdivision, there is still an opportunity that they're going to come the current way, that the streets are in place, or some may choose the alternate of Greymar and come out to this point, which will only be a right-in, right-out.
Okay. And that's why, that's what I think the concern was, is that Greymar is so narrow, and it becoming a, I mean, it's, this doesn't change that concern, but it does give everybody, the other concern of the, you know, being able to turn in.
Previously, you had, that was your only way in, really, to get into the new subdivision.
But it's not, I think it's, it's the people, not even the people in the new subdivision that are going to use, that are going to come from Oak Hall to cut through.
But they're going to come in, and they're, but they, you know, that's, that's true, but they're going to come out to Holly Springs Road, and they'll be, only way they'll be able to exit would be to take a right on the Holly Springs Road, unless they went on through the townhouses and came out to the next intersection.
And they could use Tulak.
Yeah. Is the developer here?
Yes, they are here to answer your questions.
Okay.
I had previously, I guess, had concern about Greymar, and I had recommended cul-de-sac in it, but looking at this right now, especially with that, the two-way, the right, right-in and left-in, further on that unnamed street, I think that would probably defeat the purpose of it, and it would still direct people coming in from Oak Hall into here.
Into Tulak.
By, yeah, Tulak and, it would, that would still possibly happen. I'm not sure.
Yeah, and it's just.
Would accomplish much there.
It would, it's just that that, again, that road is so narrow, so that's what.
Yeah. It's. And I guess from an engineering perspective, that's good, because then that calms traffic.
That's correct. It is a traffic calming, if somebody's looking for solutions.
Was there a median someplace on that road, as I recall?
There is a median on West Holly Springs Road along the frontage.
From where to where?
Tulak and the new.
Along their entire frontage.
But not including the.
So, this will be open to be able to, be able to make lefts in and out.
Okay.
And then, there's a median all the way down to Tulak.
Then, the median will cross over this access point.
Got it.
Okay.
Would you like the applicant to come in?
Have a question for the applicant, or not?
Yeah, I do.
You do?
Yep.
Okay. Please come forward, applicant, or applicants. And just for the record, again.
Oh, good evening. Erica Latham with Lenar Carolinas LLC, 909 Aviation Parkway, Marsfield. Oh, good evening, Erica Latham with Lennar Carolinas LLC, 909 Aviation Parkway, Marsfield.
So, on the new road that's being proposed, are you going to have some type of signage there that states that this is the townhomes at that location?
Uh, there may be, I don't know the answer. There may be marketing signage there, but there won't be a monument sign for the community.
It won't be like, you know, this is the entrance--
At, at the new, at the off-site road?
Mm-hmm.
No, there will not be a sign for the townhomes at the off-site road.
Right. Will, will there be one?
There, where will there be a sign? There will be a monument sign at the Greymar entrance off Holly Springs Road.
And that, that's where my concern comes in, is that's still going to be, I mean, I do think, I do think more people will come off the bypass or will come all the way to Holly Springs Road and use that new road, but I'm still concerned about Greymar.
There, there will be marketing signs up, obviously, and I think the people who will live there will under, will, will get in the habit of using that road if that's how they need to make a full movement, a left turn in or out. Again, I, we didn't, we talked about this before, this is not our property. Lennar doesn't have right or title to this, to the property on either side of this new road, which is why we're not putting a, a sign there. If, if it were ours, we would certainly do that.
So, you don't, you know, you don't own this road, own the road property yet, where the road's going to be?
We will, we will not. This is not our property. This is, we're building this on someone else's property.
So, Greymar will be the--
That'll be the main entrance.
Fancy entrance.
That'll be where the monument sign is, but like I said, I think when we have marketing signs up, people will know. I mean, it's the same way, we all know how to get in and out of our neighborhood. You experiment once or twice and then you know how to do it.
Knowing which way to get in is not my concern. My concern is coming down Greymar, people cutting through still, just that, that road, but--
Well, you know, I, I understand what you're saying. I think the issue when we were here last time was, the concern was there was no other way for the residents of this community to make a left turn, either in or out. And that was--
They would go in and around.
Right, they would go in and through, go in through Tulak, because you can make a left-hand turn and go in and around and through. So, here, what we're proposing is putting in this new road, so that lets these residents make that left turn without having to go through Oak Hall.
Yep.
And, and I think there'll be a convenience, I mean frankly, for residents who live on that, on Greymar or, or in that part of Oak Hall, to come out straight through Greymar and if they want to make a right, to go toward the 50, toward the bypass.
Just trying to alleviate traffic, going there and move it further down on that new road, where you'd have a grand entrance there. On the other hand, it's hard to predict--
I said, I, I think people, there's only 88 townhomes. I think people will learn, if they need to make a left-hand turn, either in or out, it will be much easier to go through that road. They're going to know it because they're going to see it. It has to be in place before any of our building permits are issued. So, when we have people come to the site to look at the homes, that's very likely how they're going to come in.
Eric, is there, is there consideration to putting some, potentially putting some sign there besides just your, your, your marketing signs and things of that nature in the future?
I mean, there's always a chance. I mean, certainly that would be something, I can't commit to it right now, I don't know, but certainly that's something we'd look at.
Anything else?
I mean, it's hard to predict human behavior. I mean, and that's, that's kind of what we're, we're trying to predict here, is human behavior. I mean, it's, we know which roads we drive on, which, what we consider are the easiest routes, so it's, it's hard to predict that. I mean, there, this could be a 88-unit development of people who just work at home, so they never, they never have to drive their cars. So, you, you just don't know, and that's the, that, that's the thing. It's very hard to predict hu, human behavior and when people will leave, what, which way they will want to turn. So, that's, that's the thing. We just have to know that there's at some point going to be 88 or, you know, 170 cars leaving at one point, or they could all leave all at the same time, they could be dispersed over 24 hours. We just, we just, we just don't know.
The demographics.
I remember our discussion about the secondary road. That seemed to be the primary issue we had the last time.
Well, the sec, well, or the, yeah, to create--
Yeah.
And I know my, my cul-de-sac idea really didn't get a whole lot of, a whole lot of traction from many people, so.
I still think it'd be good.
But I think it would defeat the purpose now, with the right-in, right-out.
I do, and I'm just, and I, I agree with you, can't predict everyone's behavior, but I just want to reiterate what Matt and Elizabeth said, that every, all the roads here have been designed to town standards, meet all the town guidelines for access and cross-section. So, you know, there, there's only two roads in the, in the community. So, if you're coming in, or let's just say you're going out and you live here, it would probably be a lot easier just to go that way and make a left than to drive over here, go through here, go through here, or I guess you have to go through here and then make a left.
I mean, I know if I lived in unit 35, I, and it was, there was a cul-de-sac at the end of Greymar, I would, without a doubt, I'd be going through Oak Hall to get home every day if I were coming home from Raleigh or, or Cary. So, I think, again, that cul-de-sac idea I have is, is outdated at this point.
Changed, yeah. Okay. What else?
No, and like I said, it's not my concern for the people in the townhomes, it's people in Oak Hall using that more as a throughway.
We think this, this new road alleviates that, that need.
Travis?
Aye. Travis Flue, Kelly Horn Associates again. I'd say if people in Oak Hall, if they're coming out to Holly Springs Road, they're using Tulak now, so those people will be using, potentially using Greymar, but it would take traffic off Tulak, which is basically the same width of road as Greymar. So, you're just trading one for the other in terms of Oak Hall traffic that would be coming out, Greymar versus Tulak.
The difference would be Tulak would be, you could, but you could turn both right and left, and Greymar, you could only turn right.
Correct, correct. But if you were, if you're coming from Oak Hall trying to get to the bypass, say, if you're turning right on the 55, you, you have to go Tulak now, you might, but now you might go Greymar instead, so it's one less car in Tulak, one more in Greymar.
I think a lot of the tra, you know, a lot of the patterns are defined by what happens on Holly Springs Road and Main Street. And the more difficulty it becomes to take a left onto Main from Holly Springs Road or so forth, these neighborhoods become cut-through. They become an alternate route, where Tulak right now is an alternate route over to Food Lion and Winward Point and, and any, you know, Sunset Ridge North, any subdivisions over there. And probably the folks in, in Downtown Square would have that same route, instead of taking Holly Springs Road and Main Street to the shopping and, and up that way, they'll just use Greymar and, and Oak Hall Drive as, as their preferred route through Oak Hall to get up to that area.
Okay.
Can we talk about getting a turn like that?
More? Done? Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Any further discussion for the board? Matt, anything else to add?
No.
Anything else to add?
Yeah, it's a better op, it's definitely a better--
Better option.
Well, it's what we kind of was wanting to do.
The big issue is making that left into Tulak.
Yep.
And people weaving through, and now they have that--
The U-turn, remember that one?
--option straight to--
Come back out.
I mean, really, I, I see people making the left turn to get to units, I don't know, the 80s and 70s, and then, I, I really, I, I, to tell you the truth, I see more people from Oak Hall using that road onto Holly Springs Road than the other, than the other--
Makes sense.
When, when this was first presented ages ago, that road, that new road that they're proposing now was a part of that plan, correct?
Right, it wasn't, yeah, so it is.
That's why we delayed the last time.
That's right, way back.
Okay.
We're back to square one with that, yeah.
And the reason to extend it to Greymar is for interconnectivity, correct?
Yep. Yeah, it's always been that way.
Are we ready for motions?
Yeah.
Yeah? Go, it's one motion, as I recall. Yep.
Motion to approve, denied, table, development plan number 16-DP--
Pick one.
Pick one.
Pick one. Oh, yeah, that's one.
I'm leaving that up to you all. I mean, I'm just putting it out there. I'm just putting it out there.
That's not the way it works.
We'll do all three.
Hey, I'm, I'm giving you three options.
Yeah.
All right. Let's try it again.
Okay, hold on.
Ready?
Yeah.
Okay.
Make the motion to approve development plan 16-DPO9 for Downtown Square Town Homes, submitted by Lennar Carolinas LLC, with conditions as listed in agenda packets.
Second. Motion been made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Agenda item 11A, new business. 06 DP-09 AO6 Main Street Square Element C, D, and E. Sean, again. Thank you all.
Yes.
Ready?
All right. Oh, yeah, wait for just a second.
This, this item on the agenda is a request for a amendment to the previously approved development plan for Main Street Square Element C, D, and E, outlined in blue on the screen here. This is the main component of Main Street Square, the central core of the project. Specifically, this is for Lot 1, which is highlighted in red on the screen here. The Main Street Square planning and development was first approved back in 2005. It is still under construction today, but it is slowly coming to completion. There are just a couple residential lots and this being the last major commercial plot left in the project. C, D, and E was specifically approved in 2006, had gone through a couple iterations. 2008 was amended, as well as 2013 it was amended. And that was, last amendment was for the Duncan Donuts Garner Appliance Building across the street, and that was a reduction from two stories to one story for that structure. So, the request before you tonight is to amend the plans for Lot 1, to reduce the square footage from 21,000 square feet over two stories, so 10,500 square feet per floor, down to 10,500 square feet and one story. So, removing that upper story results in the reduction in the square footage being proposed. There's no changes to the location or the footprint of the building, that all stays the same, no changes to the parking, although the parking requirement automatically goes down with the square footage. All of the parking is in place, so nothing is changed in that aspect. The reason for the amendment is because this represents a departure from the previously approved building elevations that were approved by the town council with the original approval of the plans back in 2006. So, as you can see on the left-hand side of the screen, the original plans offered two options for Building 1. Both are two-story buildings that feature a mix of brick and stone facade materials and have that traditional Main Street-type look with storefront glazing on the lower floor for retail. And these are the sides and rears that were envisioned for that structure. So, the proposed amendment drops that down to a one-story structure. This is the proposed elevation facing Warrington Drive. Still features brick and stone, some decorative coins along the top here and glazing, although not the same type of glazing, going from a, more of a retail-style look to an office-type structure, which is what this building is envisioned to be used for. There has been some questions on what this actually means in, in terms of height reduction. So, I've put together a, a little example for you. On the right-hand side of the screen, this is the proposed building for Lot 1. On the left-hand side of the screen, this is the approved and constructed Duncan Donuts and Garner Appliance Building directly across Warrington Drive from this building. In the background is the current approved building elevations for this lot. And so, the proposed height for the new structure, at the lowest parapet wall is 18 feet 8 inches, at the highest parapet, 20 feet 4 inches. Compared to the building across the street, this lowest parapet of the Garner and Duncan Building is at 20 feet, so it's a little bit shorter than their highest parapet. Their highest point on the building across the street is 25 feet. If you bring that line, you can kind of see how that compares to the proposed building elevation. And then in the background, you have the approved building for this lot at 32 feet in height and how that compares to the proposed elevation. So, the planning board did discuss this project at their last meeting. They discussed both the positive and negative changes that, that could come about from reducing the building height, how that may look for somebody coming into Main Street Square, especially in relation to the existing buildings directly adjacent to it. They talked a little bit about whether or not the two-story provides any sort of noise buffer for the residential units. There are some concern about how the proposal may change the look or feel of Main Street Square, and the planning board did discuss the merits, both the positive and the negative impacts that it may have. Specifically, the planning board requests that the town council discuss some of the economic issues behind this request and whether or not the town council felt that the short-term gains of developing this property may outweigh the long-term benefits of having a two-story. And so, that was something that the planning board kind of grappled with, that they decided that the, the town council was best suited to address that issue.
Elaborate, I'm, I'm not quite grasping what the, what they're asking in terms of short-term, long-term economics of having a bigger building, smaller building?
We do have our planning board representative here, Mr. DeShazer, if you'd like to hear--
Would love to.
--from him.
Good evening, everybody. Um, so, pretty much what we were presented with at night was that 50% had to be leased out before you could do the second story. So, pretty, it's pretty evident, they didn't have enough 50%, so they said, let's drop it down so that we can go ahead and do it, do it now. So, originally, it was to deny, the board wanted, the planning board pretty much was saying, let's look at the economics, because if it takes a little bit longer to get a little bit more lease, of the space leased, does that bring more revenue in at a later time with more space being rented out and, and that? And you're changing the elevation levels. We didn't see, we weren't able to see, Sean went back and they create, they made it so that we could see it, but we didn't see it on that night.
So, you're, you were actually discussing whether or not it was in developer's best interest to make more money as, if he, if he went, stayed with the original concept of a two-story building and, and looking at his economics and his, his bottom line versus--
No, what we were looking at is for the town. So, so what you're looking at is, this is talking about bringing business into the town, so you're taking off an entire another level, you're bringing, that's, if, it's pretty basic, you take less space, less businesses come, come in, that's less money being made for the town, less jobs, a lot of different things. But that's not something that we really look at, but we, that's all we recommended to the board, to the, to the council. Can you take a look at that?
We got it, I think. That, that, that clears it.
While you're up there, what were some of the comments relative to the, the building's design?
Um, that the design was fine, but there was a lot, there was a little bit of conversation around, would it look different? How different would it look from what it was recommended already to what the change would be? How different would it look driving in? Would it look just totally different? And there was a lot of conversation around the Duncan Donuts is already one level, so, you know, really trying to imagine what the difference would be.
So, looking at sightline, coming down--
Yes, absolutely.
--from Fuquay in terms of a two-story building overlapping a one-story building and not being able to see--
Correct.
Got it.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
You good?
Yep, we're good.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
I think being on the out, outer part and opposite the Duncan Donuts and Garner TV helps.
Yeah. Is this the last out parcel in that tract to be developed?
There is one, there is one more. This building back here on the other side of the central green area.
That's internal to, it's internal to the development itself. This is the last out parcel along 55.
Along 55, that is correct, yes.
Okay. So, with that being said, part of the developer probably has an incentive to go ahead and, and finish up and, and move on and close out, I would assume.
Yeah, I'm, I don't, I'm not sure if this property owner is the same as the overall developer of Main Street Square, but the applicant is here tonight, and I know they've got a couple of slides with photos to show you as well. Before I move on to the applicant, just to, to reiterate the planning board vote, there were two dissenting votes. Both Mr. Stalark and Mr. Johnson voted to recommend denial, just because they did not believe that the request was consistent with Main Street Square, the original approval.
Original proof plans beckoned.
Yes.
Any further comments? Questions?
Clear. Do we want to hear from the applicant?
Is there a reason to hear from the applicant?
I don't think so.
They, they did submit a couple photos, if you want them to walk through the photos.
Sure, yeah, nice to see you. Sure. Yeah, nice to see some pictures.
And your name and address again, please.
Good evening. My name is Marty Bizzle with Bass, Nixon, Kennedy Engineers, 6310 Chapel Hill Road in Raleigh. I'm here representing 1004 Warrington LLC. And Trey Adams is here with me with 1004 Warrington. Sean did a great job explaining why we're here. I've been with the project since 2005 and have appeared before you many times for many different amendments. And you are correct, this, we are this close to having this thing come to fruition. And I think as a whole, it has turned out much as it was planned and envisioned, and it does have that Main Street feel. It has weathered the Great Recession and come out strong. I will, I don't want to belabor, belabor any points that Sean has made, but I do want to emphasize the point, this was a planned unit development. As part of that approval in 2005, we did present a number of building elevations. There were a number because there is a retail component, there's an office component, there's a residential component. In 2008, Element CDNE went through a major overhaul as far as buildings, number of buildings, a lot of buildings were put together. The elevations were significantly changed. Building 1 was not one of those. At the time, there just was not a plan for that, just to be quite frankly, frank with you on that. The recession was looming and they basically, at the time, the developer just held that as an out parcel. Although, so we're basically reverting back to the elevations that were approved in 2005. And I would, I would go ahead and say this, this is back, back past history. At the time, there really was not a plan for that. That was more of a theoretical concept that could possibly go on that out parcel, but that, that did not come to fruition. So, and then just one more thing I want to add, that the elevations that, that we're talking about are, we're looking at about a 20, 20 and 1/2 foot building, which is essentially a story and a half. That's what the appearance looks at from the, you know, from the eye view. And looking back at the planned unit development regulations that were approved at the time, there was architectural component. And I went back and read those again, and there really was not any kind of component that required a two-story building. There's a lot of two-story buildings out here now, but there really was never written into the PUD that that needed to be a crucial component. So just wanted to make those points. And with that, I'll just turn it over to, to Trey, and I'm sure he wants to share with you these additional elevations we got.
Good evening. Trey Adams, 324 Perching Road, Raleigh, North Carolina. Thank you guys for your time. I'm gonna keep this short, because I didn't have the foresight to eat dinner. And I'm hungry now. So, add the planning board's request. As you can see, we provided the two elevations for you guys this evening to show how this, in my opinion, bookends the entrance to this gateway pretty nicely. And 20 and 1/2, it's really a story and a half. Typical floor plates for a one-story building would be about 14 feet. And so this, that was coming up, 55, and this is looking in. You can see it sort of bookmarks the project nicely, moves up. Really, just want to take a couple seconds. One of the other comments made in the planning board was, this seemed rushed. And as the nice woman earlier so eloquently said, the story sometimes behind things helps you guys see the things better. So I want to give you the background of this, who's involved and what we've been working. We've been working on this project for about a year. We have been working with the town for about nine months now on renditions to this plan. Sean really pushed me on the design of this thing, and I think we've developed a really beautiful building due to, you know, the back and forth and the efforts that we've put into this building. And in the same part, we've been working with our tenants to help bring solid healthcare to this healthcare core here. We've also, through this process, been working with economic development folks. I actually have a proposal out to a tenant from the towns, the town provided me, that they wanted in this project, even with them. We wouldn't even be able to go to two stories with this thing. And our investors in this project, or our local folks too, have been, who have been pushing us to make sure that this is a Class A, some building that this town can be proud of. One of them is a, is a major business center in town and developer that's developed a number of other buildings in this town. And he's been with us step, step by step behind this. So we really feel like we've been working with the town for the past year to build something that you guys can be proud of. And I really appreciate the words of the Pivot and the Vance guys earlier about our, our past workings with them and how they've really felt that we put our heart into these buildings. And I plan on doing that again. So with that, I'll leave you that and answer any questions you guys have.
Questions?
No, I mean, I think if this was more in the Village District in the, our two-story thing, I'd be more apt to say, eh, we want the two stories. But I think this being on the kind of outer, outer skirts there. And when we talk about the economic impact, I think about, you know, someone going into these medical offices, getting poked and prodded and wanting to come out and have a donut, or go to Thanks Latte and have coffee, or go lower their blood pressure at the gym. So I think, you know, it's a, it's going to be good for other local businesses there too. So that does, you know, help to influence my decision.
I think the sightline, you know, where you're able to see the, well, I guess the three-story building
Behind it, yeah.
Behind it is, is actually good.
Good thing, yeah.
And, you know, although I'm, I'm not considering who your tenants are, although that, that's good, but I'm not considering that in my decision. You know, the fact that it's one story is, I, I like that, and I don't, I don't have an issue with that at all. The, I don't want to vote against this, but I, what I do, in terms of the design of the building, I see that, that design, I've seen that sort of design more in our business park as opposed to in an area which is sort of like a mini, mini downtown. And I, I see some of the, the aspects, you know, architectural aspects to be very different from what you see behind it in the, you know, in the multi-story area. I would have wanted to see more, something that's maybe less modern and something that incorporates more of what we see in the, some of the pictures, you know, like where the, the coffee place is and where, you know, the chiropractor is in there. So I would want to see more, something that makes it more pedestrian-friendly in terms of design. This seems more, much more something that I would see in the business, our business park.
Sure. I mean, just to follow up on that, we, like I said, I've been working with the town. We've been through about five or six renditions of this. We were very intentional, and Sean pushed us on, making sure we had the awnings, the goosenecks. The materials match the materials in the original plans for this building and, you know, match the other materials in the Main Street Square. The corner, the, the ephesus and the cornices came off the original intention of the original design. And this, it doesn't show up great in this, but if you actually look at the buildings behind it, it actually sort of looks like the cornice, the top of this building. So, I mean, that's what we tried to, the storefront, the glass systems in this building will be storefront-type systems, and especially on the front of the building. It'll come to the ground, sort of like a retail. So, and, and the sidewalks, basically, they don't show up on this picture, wrap the whole building. So there'll be exits on either side of the building and towards the parking lot. So I think, and those doors will go to the ground. I think it will have a very nice pedestrian-type feel to it.
I think my concern is not so much the look, but it's just thinking long-term, thinking towards build-out, thinking, you know, when we're at 45, 55,000 residents. And I know this doesn't seem like it's a short-term thing. It, in relative to the build-out and long-term future of Holly Springs, it, it is to me. You know, we have this location for business and commercial, in addition to residential, but more higher intensity and higher density. And we're kind of eliminating that by reducing the square footage, footage from, was it 20,000 to 10,000, give or take. And that is lost potential business base for the long-term of Holly Springs. That would have to go elsewhere. And so when I, when I look at the findings of fact, specifically number 13 with prevent sprawl and ensure the community services and infrastructures are used strategically and conservatively, I don't feel like this satisfies that.
Other comments?
I mean, I, just to elaborate what I said before, you know, if there were a few more finely detailed features in terms of the architecture, I'd probably be a little bit more enthusiastic about it. Again, it, it gives, it's, it's almost as if this would, if we took this building and put it on Thomas Mill Road, it'd be like, you said, that's, that's, that's fantastic. I'm less enthusiastic of this here. If I saw something that's sort of, you might have been able to check the boxes in terms of, you know, awnings and all that sort of stuff, parapets and you name it. But I, I feel that those are just boxes that are checked. But I think it, and this is also the, essentially the entrance, the, the main entrance to the, to this development. And I think it just needs to incorporate more in terms of what we see in the core of it than, than what we're, we're seeing right now, at least from Main, Main, or Alfred, GB Alfred. I'd be less concerned if it was not seen, but I, I would just want to see if, I would, I would like to see if, you know, you could take it back, maybe come back next time with a few more of these, a few more features that are on here that are very similar to what you might have in some of the buildings back, back by the, by the circle.
Comments?
And I think what happens is, in, in, in the, the rear of it, you know, with the three-story, I think it, you might have the very same things in those three-story buildings that you have here. It's just that when it, they all change, they morph into something different when it's one story.
Yeah. It's not consistent with the surrounding commercial buildings there.
I'm, I'm happy to, just, you know, again, we worked, we, this is about the sixth rendition of this, and we went out there with the town.
He asked me.
And was very intentional, looking at the different aspects of the building, pulling together. I mean, I just, real quickly, building materials too, because I appreciate this concern over this, and we spent a lot of time thinking about this. This building is all masonry, brick, and brick. There, and a very little bit of ephesus to give that little pop to tie it into the rest of the building, and into the rest of the square, which was the intent of it. There are a number of other buildings in this that are, of the other, other commercial businesses that are a higher percentage ephesus and less long-term sturdy and, quite frankly, less expensive materials. This is a very expensive building. And we've spent a lot of time on this, and it was one of the factors into why we're here with the size we are. Because we want, we feel that this building is going to be, something is going to be here for 30, 40 years, and something you guys can be proud of.
And you talked about, you mentioned something about, about awnings, and, and we don't see that in this rendering. I mean, we see a very modern awning, but you don't, you don't see an awning that matches. Do you have, go back?
So you can see here, we've got the one on the side here. We've got the awnings on the front and of the building, and then there's an avenue on the opposite side.
Well, that's what I was saying, those, those don't, those are like very modern, industrial-type, something like we said, we saw in the business park. It doesn't match the awnings we see in the pictures of the buildings surrounding there.
People pulled these off of, there's other awnings in the development.
Like ours, I don't think you guys have a picture, but the building behind it, for instance, the awnings are more, I don't even know how to describe, more village-like, more?
Yeah, more fabric-type awnings, yeah. The problem with those is, frankly, they fade over time and they, they rip in the wind. But there are metal awnings in the building as well. But I'm, if you want metal.
I, I think the, you know, the, the multi-story buildings there are basically a little busier. You have, you look at the one building, it's, you know, a lot of windows. And here, there's a lot more plain brick space. And I think that's, that's the biggest difference. If you look at some of these, some of the buildings that are, again, in that, that core, right, right by that, 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 that little park right in the middle there, all those buildings are, they're just a lot busier around all the brick. Here, I think that you have a lot more brick space where there's less busyness. You know, if you had, maybe there was a little bit more adornment and, you know, maybe the windows, I, I, I'm not really sure. I'm not, I'm not a designer. But what I'm seeing is that a lot more of that plain brick space as opposed to the busier.
Well, the other ones have more storefront
Right, exactly.
More, you know, where this doesn't, this doesn't.
The building just doesn't pop.
Well, it, it just doesn't aesthetically fit in with the, that area, that PUD. I mean...
And again, it would be, this would be a, you know, a showplace in the business park. Definitely would, like, it would, it would redefine it. But here, it's plain and, you know, they're just, pop, it doesn't pop at you. And you want something that's going to pop at you when you, when you come into that main entrance there on, I guess, Warrington Place. Again, it, it just, it needs to be a little bit busier, like some of the buildings in the back.
So should we suggest tabling it, letting them, letting see rendition number seven?
You said you didn't want to send them away and say, no, I, I want them to come back with maybe something that's a little bit more, more interesting, that better defines Main Street Square and defines it more than just checking the box, okay, parapet, done. Brick, done. You know, that sort of thing, maybe a few more.
Bells and whistles?
Yeah, that make it
Okay.
Looks more similar to the variety that you see. I mean, if you look at all the buildings in, and they, granted, they are smaller, but there's a little bit more variety throughout. Here, it's almost monolithic in a, in a respect. I'm not sure if that's the right word, but it just looks like, it's just one big building, whereas all the other developments there are smaller and more interesting.
What's the pleasure?
I'll, I'll make the motion that we table this and
Should we bring it up?
And allow them to...
Rebound?
Is there something?
Yeah, there's a motion. Should we bring it up? That way we choose.
Sorry?
The motion, there.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, there we go.
Just pick one.
Just pick one. A, A, D, or two.
I understand the rules now. Motion to table development plan, major amendment 06 DP09 A06 for Main Street Square Element CDNE as submitted by Bass, Nixon, and Kennedy with the conditions listed in the agenda packet. And to also add for them, when they, for them to come back with more architectural features that make it more, make it similar to what currently has been built in the Main Street Square core area, which is around the, the park.
Motion been made to table. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to table.
Tweak it a little bit, guys.
Tweak, tweak.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Reminds me of the
We like it, but just tweak it.
Peter had a very good one.
Okay, agenda item 11B, new business, 17-016 system development fee study, Kendra Parish and Kendra Parish.
All right. So we still have some folks sticking around. Important items are always at the end, so I appreciate everybody sticking around. So, anyway, okay, so this at the end, so I appreciate everybody sticking around. Um, so, anyway, okay, so this item pertains to our system development fee study. So, a little bit of background, for years, Holly Springs, um, under the guidance of the council members at the time and the management, saw the potential in Holly Springs. Um, based on the land use plan that was adopted at the time, um, looked at the build-out of Holly Springs, looked at water and sewer, or wastewater needs of Holly Springs. Um, it takes years to get permits, as we have learned painfully. Um, so, really, the foresight of those folks and seeing the potential in Holly Springs, they started that process a really long time ago. Um, as far as water, potable water, um, the town now has access to about twelve million gallons a day, um, ten from Harnett County, two from Jordan Lake. We currently, on any given day, average day, we're only using about two million gallons of that water. Um, we had to do, we have to do water supply analysis, um, every year, and we are showing that with population projections, we have enough water capacity to last us to twenty-sixty. On the wastewater side, um, again, the, the foresight of the, the council members and the management at the time, and they looked at, we got a permit to discharge our effluent into Utley Creek. Um, this past summer, we just celebrated opening the six-million gallon plant. Um, we're only at about thirty percent of that capacity, we have the permit ability to go up to eight million. Um, we're in a very, a very good, um, situation there, um, having water and wastewater available to us for economic development. Um, that is what a lot of folks in our water and wastewater industry call the, your lifeline, or your lifeblood. So, you know, that's been in place, and the town has been, with each budget that's approved every year, we have fees that are charged to the development community for their impact to our capacity. So, we invested money upfront years ago, and we are getting a return on that investment through the development that comes into town. As you know, House Bill four-thirty-six started out a little shaky, and in the end, I feel like it, it ended up in a good place. Um, at the, the resolution of, um, the General Assembly, House Bill forty, four-thirty-six was passed, and they actually give some pretty clear guidance, um, for system development fee study that is required. Um, so, we've, we've gotten this legislation, we started to comb through it. Um, you actually, you have to go through an engineering study that then determines what your fees are. Um, so, just to go through, um, some of the steps just broadly, you look at land use assumptions, um, you look at your water and wastewater capital improvement plans. So, a lot of times during retreats, I usually have the big spreadsheets, um, that show our projected revenue, um, for the next fifteen years, and then it shows the next, the projects that we'll be undertaking, um, for the next fifteen years. This legislation actually, um, requires you, you can look out to twenty years. So, what we're going to be doing is working with a consultant to look at the current land use assumptions in detail, taking these capital improvements out years to twenty years, and then looking at a fee analysis, um, that would justify those fees. And there's three different methods that they'll be looking at. Um, within the legislation, they define them, the buy-in method, which is sort of looking back, if you will, it's forced main repairs, things that need to be done to your system that are for the benefit of future development, that's the only way you can charge this, is you're just charging new development. Um, there's also the incremental or marginal cost, which is looking forward, and then there's a combination method where you, you look at both of those, and then you can use the hybrid, if that makes more sense. So, we'll be looking at the two, and then we'll combine them and look at the combined and see what makes sense for the town. Um, we've worked with Friesen Nichols, um, is a firm that, they've come out of Texas, um, but they're here in Raleigh. They actually are, um, you know, and talking with them about helping us with this study, it, it makes a lot of sense. They do work for all government entities, they do not do private development work. So, I felt like there was not a conflict of interest, if you will, for, um, coming up with development fees that will then be charged to developers. Um, but what's before you tonight is a contract for Friesen Nichols to get us through that process and help us evaluate and get all the document, documentation needed for this engineering study. Um, there's also a public component, we have to have a forty-five-day review period where we put the study out on the streets, we collect comments. Um, we look at those comments, and then there's a public hearing that has to come, you know, we bring it before town council, have a public hearing. Um, there's a requirement to update it every five years, we anticipate we'll probably be updating that more frequently. Um, so, we're still looking, there's some technical details and questions that we're going to be looking at, um, over the next few months, but we are looking to get this, um, study completed and in place. The, the legislation goes into effect October first, and so, we're looking to, to do this, um, soon. Uh, so, I can answer any questions that you may have, and.
Didn't we discuss, Kendra, that, that there's some pluses to this, and I think you mentioned that. Uh, one, it puts a level playing field on everybody in Wake County, which is a, a new situation. And secondly, there was the initial bill, which some of us visited the day that that was discussed downtown, uh, including our town attorney. Um, there was a ten-year drawback on that, that if you did bad things ten years ago, you gotta pay for it, and towns like New Bern, for example, talking to the mayor there, if they had to do that, even though they weren't approved for certain impact fees, that would probably bankrupt a town. So, now I think we wound up in this bill with three years, perhaps, and I think we figured out that that's not so bad.
Correct.
Just want to mention that, too.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, House Bill three, four-thirty-six. Other comments or questions of, of Kendra?
So, long story short, this is the prerequisite, we have to be, we have to complete with the studies, the public hearings, et cetera.
Blah, blah.
To be able to keep our fee structure.
Yes, sir.
Modify our fee structure going forward under the new legislation that, that's been recently enacted.
Yep, yes, sir.
That's it in a nutshell.
Correct.
Okay. Anything else?
Good summary. When you read the House bill, it's like.
I was gonna say, it's, it's, it's like gobbledygook.
If anybody does want to read it, I think it's the fourth, it's the fourth draft that talks about section eight, I believe.
Yeah.
I'll talk about another one in a minute, but go ahead.
All right, um.
Sounds straightforward.
Motion?
Sure.
It's motion to retain, retain Friesen Nichols for a development fee study to meet the requirements of a new state law and to expand water and wastewater planning efforts and adopt associated budget amendments.
Second. Motion's been made a second and twice, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's in passing, I'm saying.
Not a.
Thank you, Kendra.
Thank you, Ms. Kendra.
All right, I have number twelve, other business, I got a few things I want to say tonight. Number one, crosswalk safety, always, and I, if we can use the farmer's market as at least an idea of what's getting better, I'm going to go back, even though some will agree, it was getting better Saturday when I was there, people were actually stopping way back two-car lengths.
They were, they knew they were.
Speeding. Yeah, we got speeding problems here, and I wrote, I read in the paper, the N and O, that we all read every day, of course, that Kerry did thirty to forty speeding tickets about school buses. Well, guys, that's not good, so, we have a few of those problems. But there is good news tonight. I have been working closely with Sig Hutchison, who's the chair of the, uh, county commissioners, ever since a bill called House Bill five-seventy-six came up and was approved. That was the garbage juice, leach aid bill that some of you know about, some of you don't, but those who know about it know how dangerous and how stupid a bill, that's the best I can put it, that is, where you shoot the water up in the air and blow it out, and the bad stuff comes down, and the other stuff's got all kinds of contaminants in it. If I'm living in Oak Hall, or if I'm living in Arbor Creek, on certain days, you're going to get sick. Period and a statement. We got this much evidence, hello, this much evidence of how bad a bill that is. So, in talking to Sig and, and asking him if the county commissioners, because the first time we talked about this, we got the answer from both of them, both he, uh, the county commissioners and Joe Robertson, John Robertson, from the, from the landfill, we're not going to do it. And the first question I got, and rightly so, was get it in writing. So, it took a while, but I have it from the landfill operator, number one, but the important thing was, mayor, per our conversation attached to the agenda item and resolution that will be on the Wake County Board of Commissioners' consent agenda on Tuesday, September fifteenth, fifth, at five P.M. At exactly five fifteen P.M., I got a text from the county commissioners' chair. Done. It has not been approved, we will not do it, and the wording is, now therefore be it resolved that Wake County has no intention to use or consider the use of aeration of the southwest Lake landfill leach aid. Period and a statement, party's done. Yeah, yes. So, that's my story, and I'm sticking with it. Who else? We're getting tired, aren't we?
No, um, with the hurricane in Texas, uh, we had several residents go to Houston. Uh, John Hansel.
Yeah.
Uh, he, he owns Holly Springs Barbecue, and, uh, his team went down this past Thursday, and, uh, he is, uh, feeding all those folks, uh, he's taking donations online, and, uh, I think he's going to be there to, I guess, through September the ninth, and, um, John Adcock and, uh, his team also is down there supporting those that are in need. So, kudos to them, and, uh, unfortunately, we have a storm that's, uh, potentially could hit, uh, North Carolina, and, uh, hope and pray that, uh, it's not that severe. So, that, that's all I have. Thank you. Who else?
Just a reminder, it's, uh, traditional schools back in session, means Friday Night Lights, we have football, um, on Friday nights, we'd love to see, have everybody come out, um, and just, and, and we have other sports, too, so, uh, come out and support our local teams.
Yep. We do have other sports.
Yes, we do.
[laughing]
Something about.
Tiddlywinks.
Those Friday Night Lights, it's kind of cool.
Ah, yes. What else? Come on, once.
I'd say beer connoisseur this weekend.
That's right.
That's right.
Yeah.
I wish I was going to be there, I'll be camping with my son in Black Mountain, but definitely don't miss it if you're around.
Okay.
Try not to.
It's your kind of place, never mind.
It's my kind of place, yeah, I know.
Item number thirteen, manager's report.
Yes, sir, I, uh, have a, just a few announcements. Uh, September thirteenth, next Wednesday, we have the candidates, uh, sort of meet the candidates, little workshop that we, sort of a Holly Springs tradition, that's at the Cultural Center, Holly Rooms A and B, that's at five-thirty. Uh, we'll have our staff present, uh, as well, staff can introduce themselves to the candidates and, uh, just sort of give a cursory, cursory review of some of the projects that, uh, they're involved with and so forth. So, uh, got that. Uh, September sixteenth, which is before our next council meeting.
Right.
Dog Day at the Park.
Oh, yeah.
That's at Sugg Farm, that'll be at ten A.M., so, uh, just a reminder for that. And, uh, gotta mention this, Gina, really proud of this, I think, she and her staff, I think we set a record this weekend, this past weekend, at the farmer's market.
It was huge.
It was packed.
Yes, it was sprout, they had Sprout Fest.
Yeah.
Eighteen hundred estimated visitors, that may have been a record.
At least.
Yeah.
At least, it was.
It was, it was awesome. Uh, coming up, September twenty-third is the parket and the market, the food truck rodeo at the, also at the farmer's market, that's always, that's very popular as well, so, uh, everyone's invited to attend that, also.
They also have something going on at the church that same day, I believe, the.
The fundraiser.
The fundraiser?
Yep.
The dunking booth?
I won't be there.
Oh, okay. You're going after me? Ten o'clock, I'll be there, so come, get us wet.
I guess I could ask, um.
I'm right before you.
You're before us?
Mr. Fano, it's something, I bring this up all the time, I know, meet the candidate night, um, if, uh, more than three of us want to attend, is that an issue? Because we are talking town stuff, may not be talking amongst each other, but I just want that clarified.
Uh, yeah, and you've got more than three candidates.
I mean, a candidate's a three, oh, yeah.
That could be at, at that meeting.
Yeah.
Potentially.
We have it on the website, it's four impossible.
We do, we do advertise it, as long as you don't conduct town business.
That's right.
I think you'll be okay.
But we, if we're, if we're discussing with a candidate or something, it's.
What, what your business is.
Okay.
Not town business.
You're not taking a vote, you're not, you're not voting, you're not. What, what you want to avoid is making decisions.
Right.
Behind closed doors, and then later coming up and say, well, like, we talked about, you know, last Tuesday at my house, this is what we're doing. Um, so, but, but we are going to advertise it, and it'll meet the criteria.
Okay, well, in, just in general, if, and if another group, if, like, Wakeup, Wake County wanted to host a forum, and some of us attended, I just want, I just wanted to out there and explain to people, um, that it is okay if we go, as long as we're not making decisions and.
Not deliberating as a group or functioning in that capacity.
Right, okay.
Um, one final thing, it, it's not all social events in Holly Springs. We also have our SAPI, uh, Community Engagement Meeting, which is scheduled for the twenty-first, that's on a Thursday, it's at Town Hall, uh, the timing and the details are coming up, and we will be publicizing that. Uh, but, uh, everyone, uh, you know, within the community is certainly invited, uh, to attend, uh, also, uh, with any, you know, questions, and of course, uh, will be given, you'll be given an opportunity also to share your opinion, uh, or opinions about, uh, our land use plan, current, uh, comprehensive land use plan in the area and so forth, so, wanted to share that as well. That's all I have.
And that's more of a conversation as opposed to a, like, a public hearing sort of thing, where you step up to the mic?
It's more of a conversation, you'll have an opportunity to sit down with, you know, like, staff will be present, uh, will be, have our, I would imagine our plans would be on display, uh, it's, it's really as much education, it's, it's a, it's a back-and-forth, uh, it's an opportunity to ask questions, it's, it's probably as, as informal a setting as you'll have. So, in terms of public speaking or an opportunity to step up to the mic, it's not that type of, uh, situation. Uh, some folks are less comfortable with that, quite honestly, so we wanted this to be, uh, as informal as possible. I, I guess maybe the best way to describe it would be like a, a public charrette, um, type situation or type format, which we've had, you know, in Holly Springs.
Yes. Where's it going to be at?
It's going to be in Town Hall. We were looking at various venues, we were looking at having something, uh, at one of the schools, which is closer, uh, which, which lies within the Southern Area Plan, uh, and scheduling was going, going to, quite honestly, was going to be very, very difficult. Then we looked at the, the Cultural Center, they have activities there virtually every night. Uh, we looked at other venues, and we finally settled on the Town Hall to, for at least, for at least the first meeting, and, and this is our first meeting, I think there'll be, Gina's at three, we, we have three public meetings scheduled, so this will just be the first one.
Okay.
Okay.
Counselor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, the manager would like to discuss, um, some real estate acquisition with you, so, uh, pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three-three eighteen dot eleven, A five.
That's correct.
I'd ask that you would make a motion to go into, uh, executive session.
Your motion?
Make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, thank you all for saying.
I doubt he wouldn't.
A five.